About 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 22nd, we called the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order, and we'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Barrows and Mr. Feeney can lead us.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is anyone here this evening for citizens input?
Oh, thanks.
Anything come via the mailbox? No. All right, great, then we'll get right into the Commission on Disability. If you want to come up and take a seat at the table, and whoever is presenting or speaking, if you could just say your name and introduce yourself to everyone here and at home. And we have two items. We have a new member appointment as well as the Above and Beyond Award.
Right.
Okay, my name is Susan Collins. I'm the Chair of the Foxborough Commission on Disability, and why don't I introduce our newest member, Lori Capone. She's a, I've known her from the school system. I worked in the school system, and Lori's been a speech therapist for many years. And she approached me and she said, "I'd like to be on the commission." I said, "Terrific." So Lori, would you like to just say something?
Yes, I'm really excited to be, have the opportunity to be on the Commission for Disability, and I look forward to giving back to the community and helping out these people and working with the wonderful members of the Commission as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Thank you, dear. Ran out of the house quick and I forgot my, our banner so we can take a photo op in the outside. So, we have been doing this for several years, presenting the Above and Beyond Award. We had to take a little hiatus during the COVID years, but we're back. And so, we present an award to a business if we're lucky and an individual if we're lucky. And this year, the business award goes to Trader Joe's. I met Brian Fahey, he's the captain at Trader Joe's at Patriot Place. And Trader Joe's is a national chain of neighborhood grocery stores, and the store ensures the progressive growth of the company by instilling a sense of teamwork and cooperation. It also emphasizes doing right at all times. And as this is what leads to the growth of a company in all spheres, including how it treats its customer differently from the rest. But the qualities that Trader Joe's is looking for in employees are having a good personality and are hardworking. At this time, Trader Joe's employs a couple of employees who are disabled. One has worked at the Foxborough store for more than two years, and the, another one has recently been hired in the last two months. So, these two employees stock food, bag groceries, help where needed, and they believe these employees have developed independence and they have some fun. So, the Foxborough Commission on Disability is honoring Trader Joe's in Foxborough for our Above and Beyond Award because they have shown that they provide equal access for people with disabilities. Brian Fahey is very sorry, he is unable to come this evening. Unfortunately, with two days to go before Thanksgiving, this is the busiest time of year for a grocery store, and I think Christina can verify that fact, that it was wild. I went yesterday and there wasn't a cart to be found. So, he was very honored to receive the award, and he knows he will continue to hire people with disabilities in the future. So, I will give him this plaque that he will be honored to show in the store. So, with that, I'll introduce Margaret Chason, our Vice President.
Hello, Margaret Chason. So, our second award goes to an individual who goes above and beyond to help people who have disabilities. And this year, we are honoring Paula Bouchard, who's a local mom of three children, one of whom has an intellectual disability. And this past spring, the Director of the Challenger Baseball League, which is a recreation league for, for young adults and youth with special needs, fell ill, and Paula stepped in at the last minute and with Herculean effort contacted all the field people and ordered the uniforms and got all the kids registered, and the season went off without a hitch. And everyone was very glad. We have 40 children and young adults who play special needs baseball, and they would have been very disappointed had Paula not stepped in to take over and keep things running. So, we're very grateful to her. And we have a lovely little token for you.
Thank you.
It was great stepping in, but just getting to know all the kids, and I knew it, you know, I knew it on the other side of it, but to see it and all the effort that's put into running it, it was, it was a fun year.
A lot of work, too.
A lot of work, but it was.
Quite a task to set up for, step up for.
It was great, it was fun.
Great, okay. All right, great, well, two wonderful awards. I love to start off the meeting with, with good news this evening. We do have a motion that we have to make to appoint Lorraine. I know that you're no, no stranger to the town, but thank you for coming on to, to one of the Boards and Commissions as well. So, any questions from the Board before we take a motion on out?
No, just congratulations and thank you.
And actually, I just have a comment. I don't know if, you remember, you worked with, you worked with. Actually, it's very hard to forget Holly, but I will say, just kudos to everything you guys do because Holly did not play in the challenge, the baseball that Margaret runs, but we did do like a soccer program that was in Norwood for kids, and it truly, for, for families, you know, for me, it's with an intellectual disability, obviously for my son, but it takes a village, and, and what you guys do to help families is just incredible. And, you know, sometimes people don't know it, if you, if you don't have to reach out to this group, then you don't really realize, but it does take a village, and, and so appreciated everything you guys do, for sure.
Thank you.
And Trader Joe's is a great organization.
Yeah.
I do a lot of shopping myself, you know, so I'm there frequently, and the professionalism and the courtesy and the friendliness and the confidence of the staff there is, is just very noticeable.
Yes, I, I agree.
All right.
Thank you.
You have to make a motion.
Yes, we do have a motion, and actually, Mr. Beck is reminding us just to stay close to the microphones. Is that better? Okay. It just came up for me right now, so it might take everyone about 30 seconds. I think this is the first time in my four or five years that we have had the system go down, so I apologize for the slight delay, but it's just a motion to appoint with, you have it, okay, great, in print.
A motion to appoint Lorraine Capone to the Commission on Disability for an appointment to end May 31st, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. And then we have actually, we have Senator Feeney and Rep. Barrows here also as well. Can't forget these gentlemen.
Newly re-elected.
Yes, congratulations to the two of them, the duo.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the members of the Board. This is great to be back here again this year, and I really want to recognize, and I think Stephanie said it best, and the, and the work that the Commission does on a daily basis. Not only, you know, do we see the work that they do here in Foxborough, but they're great advocates. Typically, when there's legislation that may affect those in the disability community or those with intellectual disabilities, we hear from members and advocates and parents right here in Foxborough that push for legislation to benefit families. So, thank you for all you do. But we're here for a special reason, to honor Paula Bouchard and Trader Joe's with official citations from the Massachusetts Senate and the Massachusetts House with my friend Representative Barrows. So, I'd like to start with this, and then we can make sure we'll get up to Trader Joe's probably in the next 24 hours, we'll have to do some shopping, we can deliver it out up there. But this is an official citation from the Massachusetts State Senate, "Being known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Paula Bouchard in recognition of receiving the Foxborough Commission on Disability Above and Beyond Award. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its best wishes for continued success." That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk. It is signed by our Senate President, Karen Spilka, and offered by a very grateful State Senator Paul Arfini, November 22nd, 2022. Thank you so much for all you do, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Representative?
Thank you, Mr. Feeney, Senator Feeney. We are back. So, well, thank you. Thank you all for what you're doing. This is a very welcoming community and one that looks out for everybody, and, you know, as you said, it takes a village, and I think we've got a great village here, the gem of Norfolk County. So, I'm pretty excited about this. I've, I've been to many, and I've seen the work that you've done, and the, the, the folks that are being employed and the folks that are stepping up and helping those that need it. We have the Y that's doing a great integration initiative, and that's captured a lot of people from our region, and the families and friends that have been made over the years have been really remarkable. So, again, congratulations. So, Paula, I don't like to be outdone by the Senate, so the House has a, the House has a citation for you as well, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Mass. House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Paula Bouchard in recognition of your exemplary leadership within the Challenger League baseball program and your efforts in providing such an opportunity to our community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors and is given today, the 22nd day of November, at the State House, Boston, Mass., signed by Speaker Ron Mariano and U.S. Attorney Jay Barrows." So, congratulations, thank you very much.
And while we have you two here, I hadn't expected to do this, so I apologize for putting you on the spot, but we also have received some notifications about some earmarked funds that I wanted to thank both of you gentlemen for, for the Central Street Lot, for the complex up at the Booth Playground as well. So, I think more to come on that, but very exciting news, so thank you so much for your support and help with that.
Be happy to come back and talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were happy to, as they say, pull it off.
Yes, yes, thank you very much.
Good, good.
Madam Chair, just if I could just say two, I'll let Doc speak.
No, no, I was just saying, go back.
So, thank you, congratulations to you both and to, and to Trader Joe's as well. Thank you for, for your work.
Thank you all. Thank you.
To Paula, Senator and Representative, I just want to say thank you again from the administration's side as well, because, you know, in the past few weeks, this, this is not something I've seen in my entire career, but in a matter of two weeks, we've received over $4.5 million from the state legislature based upon your collective support. And that's, that's just extraordinary number, number one, but number two, it doesn't, it doesn't go without being mentioned that you clearly are two, are a bipartisan group, which I don't know of anybody really that's as successful as this bipartisan group is in the state. So, I think it really should be recognized and acknowledged, and, and we need to say thank you for the efforts that you've both collectively done. So, I just want to say from my perspective, and I know from, from the Boards and the town as a, as a whole, we appreciate all your work. So, thank you.
Truly grateful, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great. Next, we have the Employee Advisor, Employee Insurance Advisory Committee for the 50/50 spousal support. If you could just come up, just make sure you stick close to the microphone and just introduce yourself.
Good evening.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Do you mind just getting that door while they're just out there?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm Robert Gallin, and I'm the Retiree Representative of the Town's Insurance Advisory Committee. I want to thank you for meeting with me tonight and allowing me this opportunity to discuss an important subject regarding the health insurance premiums for the surviving spouses of our retirees. And tonight, I hate to gain, I hope to gain the support of the Board to make any necessary changes that would allow modification to the town's current practice. Under current policy, upon the death of the retired employee, the surviving spouse's health insurance premium is no longer covered by the town. The 50/50% rate that was the practice while the retiree was living ends with his or her death. I think that you'll agree that the loss of a spouse is in itself tragic, but is made even worse by learning that his or her health insurance coverage is no longer in place as it was before the death. What I'm proposing is that the town adopt a local option law, Chapter 32B, Section 9D of Mass. General Laws. The local adoption of this section would allow the town to continue to pay the 50% premium for the surviving spouse of the retiree. I'm seeking the support of the Board of Selectmen in accomplishing this endeavor by placing and supporting a special article request at town meeting and any other requirement necessary to achieve this policy change. I've completed a survey of 15 towns that Foxborough uses as comparisons for these types of matters. Of the 15 communities, only Foxborough and one other community continue this practice of exclusion for surviving spouses. The communities used in the survey were Bellingham, Canton, Easton, Franklin, Mansfield, North Attleboro, Norfolk, Norton, Norwood, Plainville, Sharon, Stoughton, Walpole, and finally, Rantham. The overwhelming majority of surrounding towns continue to cover a portion of the surviving spouse's health insurance. I realize that there's a cost to the town for this policy change. However, I believe that its impact would not be felt severely since health insurance premiums are already budgeted, and the new surviving spouse's premium would be at a lower or reduced amount of what the town pays out while the retiree is living. We've all felt the strain and difficulties of recent inflation, but none more than the retirees who are on fixed incomes. The town of Foxborough has always supported its employees and retirees. We're asking for your help regarding this policy change. On behalf of your retirees and their spouses, I ask for the Board's support. In my opinion, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and we do have a copy of that letter here as well. I'm going to ask Bill just to kind of set the stage, because we've talked about this a little bit, just to see what this process looks like, because from what I understand, it's not a decision that necessarily lies with the Board, but it has to actually go to town meeting, and then you said potentially even a ballot?
It actually requires a two-step process.
So, it is, it's more than just the Board of Selectmen. So, what we would be looking at as a Board is, do we want to support this to go on the warrant, or alternatively, the Employee Insurance Advisory Committee could bring it forward, or it would have to be a citizen's petition? It would have to go on, you know, one way or another. It's just how it really gets there, because it is town meeting and it is a ballot vote, not just with this.
Right, I understand.
Yep. Just making sure everyone else understands that, because I didn't when I, when I first, when it first came up.
So, you are correct, Madam Chair, that it is, it is a two-stage process. The, the Board has the option of putting it on the warrant itself, or it could be done as, as a citizen's petition. A citizen's petition would only require 10 votes, 10 voters to petition something like that on, on the warrant for the annual town meeting. The special town meeting is, has already been closed by this Board, so wouldn't, wouldn't be eligible for consideration right now unless the Board were to determine that it should open it, reopen it for that purpose. The other, the, if, if this were to be approved at town meeting, I think it's a simple majority, if I'm not mistaken, requires a simple majority vote at the town meeting, and then it would go to the ballot for a townwide, townwide elective vote, which would be at the next eligible election, which probably wouldn't be until the next, next spring, not this spring, the following spring, the spring of '24. So, that's, that's the process, that's the steps that it takes to, to do this.
And then just to level set one more thing that I have not asked about this yet, so I don't understand, but right now, if an employee was to pass away, the spouse would still be covered, it's just at a different cost, as we're looking to adjust the cost. So, it's not that the spouse loses coverage, it's.
Right. The issue would be that the spouse would remain eligible for coverage but would have to pay 100% of the cost. As proposed and as, as written in the statute, my understanding is that, that the town, if this was accepted, then, then it would be a 50/50 split.
I think there's, there's a couple.
It is, it is only if a person's, if the, if the employee remains alive.
Right, it's a 50/50.
Right, it's a 50/50 split, right.
Retiree, not necessarily employee.
Right.
Yeah.
That's exactly right, yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So, it seems like it's, it's, the town gets to vote on it at town meeting, but then it has to go back to the town again in an, in an open ballot?
That's correct. Yeah, it's, that's the.
Yeah, it's more steps than I thought.
Yeah, it's one of the, one of the unique ones that, that are done that way. I mean, the only other one is, is like a, like an override type of thing, but this is, that's the way it was written into the statute.
It has to be in that sequence, Bill?
Well, I suppose you could do the reverse sequence, it doesn't necessarily have to be that way.
So, it could be a reverse.
It could be a reverse vote where you, you vote, where it goes on the ballot and, and then act, and then approved by town meeting, so.
That would probably speed up the process.
So, we could essentially do that next year if we wanted to.
We could do it in the spring.
With the election and then town meeting, you know, the week after.
Well, it's pretty close to the same time.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Right. Right. That's actually, that's actually true, Bob. I didn't think that, that would be right.
Bill, what would the path of the Insurance Advisory Committee entail? You said there was another path to getting this done.
No, that's, that's, that really is the only path.
It's just who puts it on the warrant.
Who puts it on the warrant, that's exactly right.
Yeah.
No, I'm here tonight to gain your support. It would, you know, be much.
There is one thing that you should be aware of, and I think everybody should be aware of, that you have two members of your, of your Board who could not vote on this because it does affect them individually, because they are, they have members of, spouses or members of their family that are affected that are employees.
Could affect you personally, I guess, yeah.
But, so, maybe, maybe even further down, I don't think.
Do you need to be careful to recuse yourself from this, though?
Well, what I'd like just to, it's just facts. So, I think maybe it'd be good just for everybody whether watching at home, because eventually they may be voting on this, but, you know, to, to let, to let everybody know what the, what the breakdown is if you're just an employee first, which is, I think, 70/30, right?
It's 70/30 if you're not retired. If you're retired.
If you're not retired.
Well, that has to be, that requires clarification, too, because once you hit 65, it goes to 50/50.
Well, okay.
Right? And if you're, if you're, it goes to, it stays at 70/30, like, think about it, it's fit, is 50/50.
It's 50/50.
If you retire, period. That's right. That's, that was changed a few years ago, that's right.
Yeah, because what I, what I think, too, as we go through the process of whether it's here or, or before town meeting, so people understand, then I think what happens is when you turn 65, you're required to pick up Medicare.
Right.
So, that changes, at that point, it also.
Becomes secondary insurance.
Yeah.
There's, there's no secondary coverage at that point. You would pay the full freight of the secondary coverage, which we, which we possibly.
Yeah, so I think there's a lot of, lot of pieces to it.
Yeah, no, it's very, very complicated, and we do have some information in our packet as well, because obviously, everyone hears about OPEB and liability, and there's a big focus to pay this off, you know, and this does increase the liability. So, this increases our OPEB liability by about $3 million and would extend, when we satisfy that, that fully funded period by approximately a year.
One more year.
So, you know, I will say this is definitely one of these tough things. You know, the, what I do for work, I'm very in touch with trends, you know, health trends, insurance trends, and the way I look at it is, most corporations are moving away from offering retiree benefits and pensions at all. You know, so, to take a really rich benefit, which I understand, you know, I understand where you're coming from, and make it even more rich, I just feel like the trend is kind of moving away from that, so I think it takes us a little bit in the wrong direction. And that's not an easy message, you know, to give to you, that's just my, my personal opinion, but, you know, if you work for some of the biggest patriarchal corporations, you know, even they're moving away from retiree benefits, never mind retiree spousal benefits. So, I know the municipal world is a little bit different, but, you know, adding to the liability and making the plan a, a little bit more rich is, is tough for me, but it's not up to us, you know, it's really up to town meeting and, and to the ballot.
How were these numbers reached?
Our actuary.
The actuary.
We have our, we have something from the actuary in our packet.
Does the actuary know how many surviving spouses are currently receiving benefits?
They actually use the, the information from the, from the, from the Treasury's office, on the, the people that are on the plan.
How do they do it?
They use the information from the Treasury's office, as, for people that are on the plan are currently receiving benefits, and then they, they do an actuarial analysis of that.
Okay.
So, so the $3 million impact and cost, Bob, is, is over a long period of time.
Over 15 years, 16 years, right?
Yeah, that's right, exactly, right. So, but the, but if you're to pay, the, the OPEB liability would increase by one additional year by doing that.
Well, you know, I would question those numbers because $3 million over 15 or 16 years, that's $200,000 a year. And at $200,000 a year, you'd need, you'd need 83 or approximately 85 surviving spouses receiving benefits every year. That's a big number. I don't think that's an accurate number.
Well, actuarial is a, that's a, that's a pretty good science. I mean, and I, and this, this particular actuary has been doing this for a long, long time, so I'm not here to argue that, I mean, but I, I would, I would be careful about questioning an actuary's analysis like.
Well, I just, I have my own.
Usually pretty good.
I have my own quick math in my head.
Fair enough.
And, right here on this pad, and it looks like.
So, I, I'm not exactly the, the exact science that they use to do that.
Yeah.
But I've been very careful in my career never to question an actuary, because it's, it's usually pretty good science.
A question to you, you being, you know, on, on that committee, how many retirees are, have benefits?
That's what I'm challenging now, that's what I'm asking, how many?
Oh, you don't know?
How many? I don't have the number. I think that, you know, we should probably form some kind of subcommittee, Selectmen, you know, Finance Director, Insurance Advisory Committee, and let's, let's iron it out. This is achievable, it's something that's worthwhile, it's something that may, they may not do in the corporate world, but they certainly do in every town around us.
Yeah, I just think even.
In the public sector, I mean, that's not a reason not to do it.
Even the trend with the richness of the benefits, though, like, at some point, someone somewhere in the municipal world has to say, "This doesn't work, we can't afford to do this."
It's working everywhere else.
So, I, I, I know, and I, I get that, but to, to go the other way and make a program more rich is where I struggle slightly, and let's let Doc, and I want to hear from Doc and Dennis.
No, I, I think you have a great idea of, you know, we got a little bit of time here now. You know, we're looking at the spring, let's get someone from each of the committees to meet and.
Let's get some real, let's get some real numbers.
Yeah, and, and come back. I, I'd like to see that.
He could at least explain it to you.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any reason to question the actuaries, I mean.
I, I agree, but I'm curious how many retirees we have on the roll.
Yeah.
Well, we could bring a person out to explain it, so that they.
Yeah, to further explain and go to.
It's not only the retirees, it's the, it's the surviving spouses of retirement.
Well, yeah, but I'd like.
That's a smaller number.
True.
That's a much smaller number.
I'd like to see how many there are, though.
You know, if these numbers are based on all the retirees, that's, that's not accurate.
Well, to me, I mean, going back to the actuary, I'd be curious to know, you know, what basis, are they doing it on a claims paid basis? Is that how they're doing the calculation? Because this population would be much heavier users, you know, so that might be, even though it's a small number.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
That's, that's part of the problem, is the fact that.
Yeah, it's a high, it's a high claim, high cost group as well.
High cost claim issues.
Which is why companies are getting away, you know, from retiree benefits as a whole because of the liability and, you know.
My medics, my medics plan is pretty reasonable. I love it.
So, so I think, just for the sake of discussion, so that we're not guessing and giving Bob bad information or anyone bad information, let's, let's bring the actuary in, explain it to the committee.
Okay.
So, and then, so that anybody else who wants to participate, we can, you can hear from them directly, and they can explain the science of how they reach that.
Yeah, I think we need firm numbers on the.
How often does the committee?
Surviving spouses.
How often does the committee meet, or when do they meet to try to get the actuary in?
They'll meet that off, it's just as needed when.
We hardly ever, we hardly ever meet.
Okay. And is this, is this from the committee as a whole, like, you guys took a vote on it, or is this from you personally?
We, we, we took an informal vote on it when we were doing the, the dental plan.
Okay.
Last summer, and I brought it up then.
Okay.
And everyone who was in attendance at that meeting from the committee, you know, was in agreement with, with this endeavor. So, you know, if we could have, uh, you know, an informal committee meet in a, in a couple of weeks. But I think it should include the finance director and, you know, all the money people and get some numbers from Norfolk County Retirement as to how many people, how many surviving spouses are receiving a check every month? That's easy enough to find out.
But, well, the, the issue there, Bob, is that if you, if, if the, the town actually is the one who provides the plan for the retirees for health insurance, not Norfolk County in that regard.
No, but they would have the information.
So, but so does the town. And that, because we, because we provide the plan for the people. And, and in fact, Maya does that analysis for us.
Okay.
All right, so they have all the numbers. That's, that's not a question. And the numbers that they, we have, we're giving to the actuary.
All right, so we already have the numbers?
Yes, exactly.
All right.
You know, I just, you know, following up on what you said, Leah. Um, I worked in the private sector for many years and the public sector for many years. And I think, underscoring what Leah's saying, by and large, the private sector, not only are they cutting back on, on a, a lot of things like pensions and health insurance and things like, of that nature, but this specific kind of post-retirement health benefit is pretty much gone in the private sector. I can tell you from my, my own experience, it is still there sometimes in the public sector. But then you get the issue in the public sector is you do have the OPEB liability. We're in good shape in Foxborough because we've done a great job paying that down, but it really is paid by the taxpayers. So they have, they have an interest in this too, Bob, going forward. I just want to kind of lay it out.
I appreciate that, but, you know, wages and, and bonuses and other things that you have in a, in a, in a private sector are nonexistent in the, in the, in the public sector. So we're really comparing apples and oranges.
No, we, we get it. We've had that conversation, you know, many times.
Yeah, I mean, we could debate that all night long.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I think to your point too, Leah, um, you know, we're always backed up a wall because we're, we're listening, okay, well, you know, we've heard a number of times, well, the municipalities are different. So it'd be, you know, what'd be interesting, I think, just to see is, I know Bob did a sampling here, but, you know, what, what's happening across the whole state? You know what I mean? It like.
What towns don't do this? I don't know which ones do, but.
Exactly, exactly. Maybe, maybe there's, like you said, maybe there, because they see, um, that private companies are starting to get away from it. Maybe some of the municipalities are saying, well, we're going to follow that trend.
It's tough to make, it's tough to make the trend and make benefits less rich, no matter where you are. And that's where I just struggle with making them more rich, unfortunately, just given the day and age. I know I've got to hit like a three thou, I actually did my, my deductibles because I was like, how the heck has my family of three not met my deductible? And I had all, over three thousand dollars of out-of-pocket costs, and nothing's even been covered yet. I mean, so it's just kind of the way of the world, unfortunately, with health insurance. And, um, you know, I don't think it's our one little town's problem to fix. It's kind of like the housing crisis. Like, there is a bigger healthcare crisis. And, um, you know, I just worry about adding three million dollars to the, to the liability when you look at the numbers. It's not an easy message. I understand, you know, exactly where you're coming from, and I, I feel that. I feel for you guys, um, but to just go the other way is where it's a little tough for me.
I understand.
Yep. So I think, you know, the, the actuary tables are a lot more complicated than kind of that, that simple math. So I think getting the actuary in to hopefully explain and explain the tables, you know, make sure everyone understands and we're working from the same numbers. And then once we understand the numbers, you know, maybe we can come back and, and look at it again.
I think it's good at least to, to establish the facts of the situation, and everybody can have a much better position to be, have an informed decision.
And let me say, even if I personally don't agree with it, I'm not opposed to us putting it on the warrant, you know, with the Board of Selectmen and seeing what the town wants, because I'm just one person. This is really up to the citizens of the town.
That's what I'm after.
Yep, so.
That's the bottom line. That's what I'm after. Let's let the town decide.
Yep, exactly, so.
And, and I personally think it should be a selectmen, uh, warrant.
Yeah, I think even if I don't personally agree with it, we can still put it on the warrant, you know, yeah, so.
And I can have those statewide numbers for you at our meeting.
When we get together.
I'll get them through the, I'll get them through mass retirees.
Yeah, you can, that's, that's what we'll have, the mass retirees.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll get them.
Okay. Because do we, do we think when the actuary, um, comes up with this number, is it, is it, um, going with the highest number it could be? Like, if all the retirees, you know, you know what I mean?
It's a science, Stephanie. I, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even venture a guess. I wouldn't even venture a guess on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I challenge, I challenge that number, I really do.
Well, no, I, I actually, the number's seen, the number doesn't seem unrealistic to me, probably, honestly. And I've been doing insurance for forty years.
Yeah.
I will tell you, I'm not, I don't think the number's unrealistic because the thing that gets lost in the translation is that if you're dealing with people at sixty-five years or sixty years old or up to, say, eighty years old or ninety years old, claims get very expensive during that period of time. And so that's what you're paying for, is that, is that offsetting the coverage.
But I'm basing my, my reasoning on the insurance premiums, not on the cost of the healthcare.
Well, it's claims. Factoring to that, highly, highly factor, it's much more than premiums.
And it's claims.
But I know with Foxborough, we've had a pretty good track record, insurance-wise, right?
Well, yeah, but, but the trend is going up now, right now, unfortunately.
The trend with COVID was we had that year where we didn't have a lot of claims. It was downward again last year. Now it's coming up at about ten percent. It's kind of, you know, what I've heard.
Just so you understand, though, the, the, the coverages, if you're, you're talking about retirees that are below the age of sixty-five and then, and, and the ones, but the cost below the age of sixty-five can be very expensive as well. So it gets, the, the cost gets a little bit muted at sixty-five because some of that gets pushed to, to the feds, all right, through, through Medicare.
Inflation, interest rates go into the table. There's a lot of different factors into the actuary tables.
But I, I'm not the expert in this area, but I, I can tell you that I've seen actuary tables before. And then when they explain them to me, I get it. I have the same questions you do initially, but then when they explain it, it makes sense. So it's probably best to have them do it.
Okay, so where do we go from here? We meet in a couple of weeks again with, you know, a former committee?
For, for, I'll put together.
I think, I think the advisory committee, the employment advisory committee needs to meet with the actuary. I don't know that we need to throw together like a committee. I think if you guys have a meeting and someone wants to attend it, we certainly can. But, um, I think that's the next step, is to have the actuary come in and explain it to that group and anyone that wants to go and figure out what the numbers are.
Will that include the finance director and all that?
Finance director.
All right.
They were, they were the ones that facilitated the email with the actuary as well.
Okay, great.
And then we'll, we'll, we'll have the, and the other ones that, that contacted the actuary in the first place.
All right.
Right? Paula Maloney as well.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
We're done?
Yes, we're done. Thank you very much. We'll be back in touch.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
All right, great. So being seven twenty, we're a little bit behind schedule, but we have the building inspections permit fee schedule review. And if you don't mind, just introducing yourself and.
I don't mind.
Staying close to this, to the microphone as well.
Well, I got a loud voice.
Yeah, I thought I did too, but I was getting the, the hand signal.
Good evening, Scott Shippey, building commissioner. Good evening, Madam Chair. Um, I'm here to present, um, I made a prom, well, not a promise, a commitment to you folks when I was hired in January to, um, go over the fee schedules and revise them. And here we are. It took me about this long with other, other stuff going on. But I got it in front of you, so I am here to present it and answer any questions you might have. There's a lot of numbers.
Yeah, there's a lot of numbers. I think it's kind of self-explanatory. The one that I had trouble with was the one that was like a percentage, you know, for new builds and renovations. So that's when I asked Scott to give like, let's say we had a fake new house and a fake renovation project, what would that permit look like across the town? So that's the second one.
Yep, that's the last one you should have.
But everything, you know, looked, again, you know, you know, we love our comps and our benchmarking, and we looked to kind of be in the middle on most of them.
Correct.
The other thing just to mention is this would take place for any permits submitted one, one or after of this year?
That's what I'm looking for, yes, ma'am.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a bunch of questions.
Go ahead.
Thanks for coming in, Scott.
No problem.
So appreciate the, the comparables across the various towns. Just from a conceptual standpoint, I just want to understand that we're, we're trying to cover the cost of, of the service here. This is, we're not profit generating here.
Correct. I mean, that, that covers lights at the town hall that I have to pay a share of, gas for the few, um, for the vehicles. It, it, there's a lot of overhead that people don't realize that there is, is in the building department.
Right, sure. So how close are we to covering the cost for the current fee structure? And where does this get us? And if we don't know the answer to that question, that's something.
I don't have the answer to that question because I don't know what my, my portion or the portion from the building department would be to, to run the lights in the town hall, the heat in the town hall. I mean, that, that's all beyond me.
Also, the number of inspections required.
Now, we're doing inspections. Now we have to cover the insurance for, for our folks to go, my staff to go out there, do the inspections. They might be out there four or five times for that one, one inspection. So there, there are a lot of overhead.
How did we come to these rates?
These rates are basically, what I did is I did the comparison across towns.
Okay.
And, and kind of like fell in the middle of those towns. Your permit fees have not been raised since two thousand and thirteen.
Understood, yeah.
And this only affects people that are applying for building permits. It does not affect the taxpayer. This is for applying building permits only.
Doesn't affect taxpayers that are building?
Well, if they're doing work, yes. It does, but it doesn't affect the taxpayer. It doesn't come out of taxes. It's if they pull a permit.
Right. Understood. So I, I just feel like the approach of finding the median across various towns, I'm going to, I struggle with that in that, like we talked about, covering the cost of the service is what we're trying to do here. So this is helpful because this is what I was, when I was looking at rates earlier on the, on the, what we were provided earlier, the information, the rates don't mean a whole heck of a lot to me when I'm thinking about a project. What is the unit cost of a project? And what is the overall cost? Let's say, all else equal, we apply these rates instead of the old rates. What is that impact? What kind of revenue is that driving? And so it, it feels like we're really far away from that. And I can appreciate we haven't changed these rates in a really long time. That's unfortunate. But I feel like, me personally, I would need a little bit more support behind these new rates to be able to support this, this proposal.
That, that's fine.
Yeah.
I guess one observation I'm making is there's very little change with the commercial and lots of change for anything residential.
I think you were lacking in your residential area.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the commercial had the percentage already.
Exactly.
It kind of.
It kind of, it kind of like was self-sustained. And, and it met, met the criteria across the board with other towns. It was very comparable.
Did, so all of the, all of these numbers, like even the commercial, didn't change since two thousand and thirteen?
Yes, correct. And, and yours. And, um, I know some of the, um, like Sharon, uh, they just, they just raised their, revised their fees in two thousand and twenty-one. I do believe, I have the, Sharon was twenty-one. Eastern was two thousand and nineteen. Walpole was two thousand and nineteen. Mansfield was two thousand and eighteen. And Rantham was two thousand and seventeen. And Norton was two thousand and nineteen.
I mean, and even the cost to go out and do these, sometimes, like you said, you could be going out.
You're going out multiple times.
You might not even be covering it with even the new fees, you know, right?
Probably.
Well, we don't know.
Right, right. Well, every, and every project is different. You know, some you might have to go out two times, some you could go out four times, right?
Yeah, some, some of them might be just cut and dry, and you're going out that one time. So, but, but then there's projects that are, that are lagging or that need that extra help, so to speak. And you're going out there multiple times.
So I would expect a project where you go out six times to cost more than one that costs two. Here we're sort of suggesting a blended rate to see where that falls. Just one other quick thought. There is the proposal of fifty-five cents per square foot or one percent of construction costs. And it looks like they're never, ever going to be anywhere close with the fifty-five cents per square foot being cents on the dollar practically to the one percent.
One of the concepts of using that, that methodology is because they like, sometimes the numbers are fluctuated when they do the costs with the building. So you will get it in, they can't fluctuate the actual square footage of that, of that project. So you will get the cover of the cost.
Right, so.
So either way, I mean, we can get rid of that and just go fifty-five cents per, per square foot across the board. I just.
Well, if we did that, Scott, then the, this top proposal here would go from fifty-five hundred down to under two thousand. So there's such a wide range there that.
No, actually, the proposals would be nineteen eighty, so it would be just under two thousand.
Yeah, I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said under fifteen hundred.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant. So there's such a wide range there. I mean, what is the actual cost of, of that work? And it's hard to say from here.
Well, it's hard to say because, I mean, it, it, like Madam Chair said, it different just.
And you're never going to be able to figure that out when you start a project.
You cannot figure it out on every pro, every project's going to be different. There's not no cookie cutter, cookie cutter project.
I'd like to think we could get closer than fifty-five versus, versus two thousand or, I mean, that's a really wide range. So I'm thinking about, again, unit cost of a project, and then what is the change to the overall, uh, revenue from, you know, where we were to where we are? What is that impact? Is it, is it twice? You know, two times, two and a half? So I, and I know that there's, I, I just feel like there's some more work to be done here bef, before I'm comfortable with it. And I just would want to understand the impact a little bit better.
Madam Chair, I think if I could just address that, you've got to say something else. Go ahead. I'll defer to you.
No, I was just going to say, and I'm, it's the first time I'm going through this, but then this hasn't happened since two thousand and thirteen. So, yeah, my reaction, though, is these are enormous increases. And I'm just curious about the impact and the pushback. Who ultimately pays these costs? You know, the trades, the builders, maybe they pay some of them, but a lot of times they get passed on to the buyer, the customer.
They get passed on to the buyer.
So this is all going to get passed on to the buyer ultimately, and it's a huge hit, and they don't know what's coming. So I just kind of put that out there as factual in terms of, uh, you know, what we might be dealing with when, once people realize that this is being rolled out.
I think that the, if I could just say that, I think the approach that you're using Seth versus the one that, that Scott was using was more, Scott's trying to, trying to just align the town's fees in comparison to the, to the, to the region, to the region itself. And that, and it's been, since, since Foxborough has sort of been an outlier in terms of addressing that issue for many, several years, the, the most, the least, uh, somebody has done it was in two thousand and eighteen, other than us. So I, so I think we're behind in that regard. So I think that's all he's trying to do, is to bring us more in line with, with the rest of the world. Having said that, we can certainly address any questions you might have as to how you get there. But I, I don't think there was anything really much beyond just trying to align yourself with the rest of, with the rest of the region.
That's exactly correct.
Yeah.
I was just trying to align.
Frankly, even similar to the conversation we just had about the retiree benefits, I'm frankly less concerned with what other towns do. I'm interested in covering the cost of the service and getting as close as we can to having the, a fair assessment of what that cost may be depending on the service that the town's providing. And so, so the approach of, of the comparables, I'm just gonna struggle with that until I have more.
One thing I was trying to do too is get some clarif, like clarity on some of the, if you look at the proposed renovation additions, it's kind of like very convoluted. Forty-five dollars plus eight dollars per a thousand after the first five thousand. It, it, it's just, and just to do that in an online permitting system platform, they have trouble. So now we have to review that. We have to take more time doing the plan review, so.
Simple is better.
Simple is better.
We may be able to simplify this more, like if we're never ever gonna get near fifty-five cents per square foot. If one percent is always three or four times more than fifty-five cents, then.
We can, we can.
We don't need to say fifty-five cents.
Yeah, we can do, we can do the fifty-five cents and get rid of the one percent.
Well, it doesn't just feel so different, though.
The only thing is too, like when you do a, like, granted, some of these big companies may really have an idea what their costs are gonna be. Like, it's really only as good too as the estimated cost you put in the tool. And who's to say, and how do we say, like, oh, no, your renovation, you know, this looks like it's worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars versus fifty thousand dollars? Like, you know. That's kind of where my mind goes. The only thing with the percentage of costs.
Cause that is always.
I feel like the square feet are more cut and dry.
Correct.
And really, the inspection cost should be the same whether I'm putting Formica in my kitchen and Seth is doing the most, you know, expensive marble. That's why I kind of like the square foot approach personally with the minimum.
I, I agree.
The percentage of cost just, just is like an added level of complexity.
Well, that's, that's exactly where I was thinking, and that was gonna be my question. When, when you say cost of the project, so Lee and I can do conceptually the same exact project. And we, we all know what the prices are. Her project could cost two, two hundred thousand, I could cost a hundred.
And it's not even when it's done, it's when you're applying for the permit. So like, I may be like, stick my finger up in the air, oh, this is gonna cost, you know.
Yeah.
Seventy-five thousand, and you might say, you know, double that, a hundred and fifty thousand.
I mean, based on what materials you use, like, like to me, that, that doesn't make sense. Like, like the, the, the cost of the project, because if I choose to put top of the line, but you're gonna come out to, to inspect, you know, what we've done. Does it really matter whether I, I put marble down or, or Formica or?
It's a sales tax, it's a inspection.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I just, I kind of lean towards what Seth's saying about just, like, I know we have to cover our costs. And when you said we're going out, does that mean somebody?
I have staff.
From you or your department?
I have.
So here's the thing. You're, I'm guessing your staff is on a salary, hourly salary, whatever. So for me, if you have to go out six times, you're on the clock. And, and that may, that may create more work for your department, whether, and if they had, if it had to be overtime or whatever. But I don't care if you went out to a project once or six times. If you're on salary, and that's part of your job, like for me.
This costs, this would cover those costs.
Are they salary? You're part-time inspectors, like you're electrical inspectors and you're plumbing inspectors.
Yes.
They are salaried?
Yes.
So it doesn't matter if they do one inspection or a hundred? Okay.
Yeah.
No, but just bear in mind, though, that, that.
They're still be on the clock, and that still costs X amount of dollars per hour.
But, but the budget is funded by fees as well as taxes.
Yeah, but I mean, when, when you said they're salary, so.
Your, your particular department is covered mostly by fees.
Yeah. This is someone who, who's a, a, a forty, I'm just saying, using that forty-hour employee, whether it is or. And do you guys do inspections off a regular scheduled workday? Like, is there over, overtime?
There is overtime because of the collective bargaining agreement. They are paid at a different rate, and that would be covered in my new.
Yeah. I just, I just kind of feel like if, if there's a salary being paid, I mean, if, if your department is understaffed, then that's a different conversation. Like, maybe, maybe we have to, I, maybe we have to add another, add another employee. I mean, I, I wouldn't know that because I don't know what your, what your workday is like or work week is like. If you're, if you're able to do the inspections.
You're in pretty good shape.
You can or not. So for me, the, the, unless it's, if you're doing the inspections now, I don't, I don't feel like we're, we have additional cost. You know, the, the, the taxpayers, any, anything that happens here, any type of, whether it's new construction or renovation, is going to be by somebody who lives in Foxborough, who pays taxes, that obviously pays the salaries for your department. So, I mean, I'm okay with raising it. I just don't know if we need to raise it to where it is. And, and to Seth's point, I don't want to see us making any money on this.
Correct. I totally agree with that.
Cover, cover costs.
Totally agree with that.
And I think we're really only, to me, it sounds like we're kind of talking about.
That one percent.
That, the, the, the.
Fifty-five cents.
The renovations and the new construction. Like, the rest of them are like, you know, over ten years going up from, you know, forty to seventy-five dollars, you know.
Well, I don't know what that means, though, like, in terms of the cost. Well, okay, so that's a good point. It's, it's.
Yeah, I mean.
It's under, if it's a hundred dollars.
Yeah, like if, if we're talking like ten, twenty dollars, I think we were really talking about this. But Dennis and Doc also have something as well.
Yeah, no, and I, I, I really, and one, I don't like to get into the weeds. I'm sure you put a lot of work into this. I like the idea of looking at the comparables and seeing where we are with the comparables of contiguous towns. That makes a lot of sense, why reinvent the wheel. I know you can approach it completely differently, but I think what you're trying to do makes a lot of sense. My issue is, even for the residential, going, having people absorb really a nine-year hit of no increases in the fees all in one year. That's really what's gonna hit people. And is there another way of doing it? Is there another way of phasing it in so it isn't such a big hit for people at a time when they're getting hit from every angle, really?
That, that's difficult when you're doing an online permitting process, because now you have to sit there and you gotta, you gotta get the, the vendor involved. And, and that could be added costs.
But, but you could, you could do it.
You could do it.
And I'll.
I mean, it's a different fee schedule every year.
If you did it.
Or, or every two years or whatever.
Yeah, if you did it like, you know, forty-five cents now, forty, fifty cents next year. Fifty-five cents the year after that.
You're looking at going lower, because your, your fee schedule right now is fifty-five cents.
We're already at fifty-five cents.
We're at fifty-five cents right now.
Unfinished face.
I stand corrected, but you see what I'm saying? We're trying to get to a, a phased-in approach is fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five, whatever.
And maybe it's the minimum amount, you know? Maybe it's like, what's our minimum cost to get out there and do this? You know, fifty-five cents per square foot, minimum on this. Then there really isn't even that much of an increase, I mean, from where we are now. And looking at this, like a renovation, that one's kind of minor. It's more the new construction proposed one that really takes the, the harder hit.
And I was just throwing numbers out there when I said five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for a two-story. That's pretty close.
That's what it costs, right?
Yeah.
Pretty.
Or less than, you know, more than that.
Well, I don't see less.
Because the land.
That's what I mean, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, good, that's you making my point.
Well, that wouldn't, the land wouldn't come into the construction.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what, if it seems low, that doesn't include the land cost, you know? It's just the building cost.
I mean, I mean, we could take out the one percent and just leave fifty-five cro, five cents across.
Fifty-five may be too low, if that's what we were before, and I just don't know.
I can revisit that. I mean, it seems that is comparable across the.
Eastern's all the way up at ninety cents.
Now, Eastern is at ninety cents.
Yeah, again, the comparables are less meaningful to me than, than covering costs. And so, so I, I think what I might be saying, Scott, is I don't know that you're gonna be able to do this, like, by yourself in terms of understanding how to cover the cost. I don't like to give the finance team more stuff to do, but.
Well, they have more knowledge in there than I do.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, I mean, they're the experts and they may be able to help us understand what costs we're trying to cover. How to identify the cost of a project, not exactly, we're never gonna get exact, but the cost of a project. And how to cover that cost appropriately, how to cover the cost broadly speaking. To Dennis's point, you know, raising the cost all at once may be tough. But then again, they, maybe they've been getting a really good price for the last nine years, and now they're just gonna have to pay, you know, cover the cost of, what the reality is, so.
So, so I think it's important to remember that this, it's, the perspective is that when you're building new, granted, there are some people who live in town and they're gonna, they're, they're already residents, they're already taxpayers.
Yeah.
And they're gonna build a new house. So they're, they're impacted that way. But by and large, people build new houses, they move into town, and then they pay the taxes afterwards. So this is sort of like the initial cost of doing business with the town, when in fact you're covering the cost of the town's staff doing that. And then, and the important break-even point is, if you're covering it with fees, that means you're putting less pressure on the tax rate by doing that.
Yeah.
So that's, that's really the point.
Well, that was the two points I was gonna bring up. One, we haven't raised our fees since two thousand and thirteen, yet the cost of living and everything else has gone up. You know, his payroll has gone up, his heat's gone up, his electricity's gone up. Right. So we got it, we, we definitely have to increase it. Point two, you know, square footage over cost is definitely the way to go.
I agree.
Three, I think we're way too low on, on the fifty-five cents. I think somewhere along the line, we gotta find a good middle of the road to go. And then my last point is, you know, sort of like, well, as, as you mentioned earlier, part of his budget is paid for by fees.
No, most of it is all paid by fees.
But, but fees, but what isn't does come from the taxpayers. So if he's underfunded because his fees aren't enough, it's more of a burden on the, on the taxpayers to help fund that, that extra little piece.
Yeah, it's, it's a blended rate, though, Scott, to be, to be clear with you. It's, it's the, the budget, his budget is a blended rate of fees and tax rate, so.
Right, but like, like no other budget, really.
Right, but you're putting more pressure on the tax rate if you're keeping, artificially keeping your, your rates low.
Right.
So I think that's the point.
And for me, like, we're gonna have to take some kind of stab at it, because there is no science, no two projects are right, like, no two inspections are like. So at some point, you do have to kind of use the comps to come up with something that's reasonable. And, you know, you are in this world, you've seen it in different towns, we have comps here. You know, I think no doubt in ten years, make, raising the fee somewhat, I don't think is unreasonable. So I'd kind of look to you to what's, you know, reasonable.
And I do have one more point. I think, yeah, we're putting a lot on, on, on the people upstairs or over here. But I think they could crunch the numbers and figure out what the cost is per day or whatever for what he does. I think it's somewhere along the line, they could put their numbers together, I'm sure Maria, and then.
But if you're, if you're running that, if you're running that tight, and then you've got more permits, you know, like you have to have some, some room too to try to get to an exact science on this, I think is, is.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting because, because you could have a really good year in building permits one year, you're not so good year the, the year next. And so it's, it's sort of a, it's, it's, it's a streaky thing.
Because we were down during COVID.
Yeah.
And now we're picking back up again.
Oh, you're having a very good year.
Yeah.
We are.
You're having a very good year.
Yeah, I, I think, well, Seth started that, the conversation about the cost, Doc, you just kind of somewhat mentioned the same thing. It'd be good if we could just figure out with what's going on now, are we covering the cost? If we're not covering the cost, of, of course, and it probably has to go up. I guess the question is, how much do we, do we go up?
That's kind of what I'm saying, like, you know. I'm not worried about it tying to an exact, you know, this is what we need to do, but like, kind of what makes sense overall.
Yeah, and I do like the square footage as well, because, you know, you know, and, and I'm gonna be, you know, completely transparent. We were about to do a huge renovation right before COVID hit. I had started my, getting my bids and stuff, and that, that same renovation is going from two hundred thousand to three fifty right now. So that's why we backed up and we're gonna kind of wait and see things level off. So the cost, I'm, I have a hot pot with that.
The three dollars on your permit, you know, I get it, you know, but.
Yeah.
You know, when you're doing an estimate, they're probably using some, you know, rounded amount anyway, I would imagine.
Yeah.
You know, based on all of them, so. All right, so do we want to take this and come back next meeting? Do we wanna, you know?
Probably gonna take longer than.
Oh, it's gonna take, I mean.
We're gonna have to roll it in one, one, we could roll it in two, one, we could roll it in three, one.
Do it anytime you want. I was like, I just made a commitment to you folks to sit there and bring it to, forward to you.
Right.
What you want me to do is totally up to you.
Yeah, I, I think we should get accounting involved a little bit.
Okay.
Though.
Okay.
And come back again.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much for the time you put into this.
No, no pressure then, you know, to, over Thanksgiving, be crunching numbers, whatever, just get back to us when it, when it works.
No homework this weekend. There's always homework.
Yep.
Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanksgiving.
Good subject.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good conversation.
Do you have a page? I think you had more pages.
All right, great. So up next, we have our DPW update, and we have Bob Moran, is that, am I saying it right? Has sat here from National Grid through our entire meeting to, to give us an update. We may remember, is it Ann?
Ann Malli.
Ann Malli, we, we saw for many years, so Bob is the new Ann.
After forty-one years, yeah.
Great, great. So we'll go through the National Grid update, and then we'll do the DPW update after that, so.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. By way of introduction, Bob Moran from National Grid, I'm a community manager replacing Ann Malli, who retired forty-one years. I don't have quite that much experience, I'm only at thirty-five years. A few more years.
Hang in there.
So just by way of a winter update, a couple of things to update the board on and the residents as well. Obviously, I had come before the board previously as part of the permitting process for the Foxborough Two substation. So that construction is underway. If you've seen the site, we've constructed the fence. I believe the transformer delivery is in February. Supply chain's a little bit of a challenge of late, but, you know, we are looking at February, I think. And of course, we value the cooperation with Chris, he's been excellent and a good neighbor across the street there. What you may not realize is that the existing capacity of the sub is about seven MVA. The new sub will be ten MVA, so it's, you know, almost a fifty percent increase in capacity there. And there's an increase in taxes that'll be commensurate with the investment. As for tree trimming, pruning is generally a four- or five-year cycle. So some things that we did last year won't come up again until their cycle comes up. But we do have Stanley Tree in town working now, they're doing the twenty-three KV right-of-way, which supplies a lot of the, a lot of the town, actually. About half of the work there is on the roads in Foxborough and Mansfield, and the rest of it is in the right-of-way. Maybe late January, Davy Tree will be in on one of the circuits out of the Foxborough Two sub on Elm Street. And that would cover, like Elm Street, Central, Commercial, Walnut, Spring, and Belcher, that area. We do have some lines scheduled for pruning beginning in fiscal year twenty-four, which for us begins in April. And importantly, we did some enhanced vegetation management on one of the lines that runs from really the Rantham outlets to the center of Foxborough. We actually removed seventy-seven trees from Pierce, Washington, and Main Streets, and Lakeview Road. And in Rantham, we removed about three hundred trees. Not to say that everyone in Rantham gets that benefit, everyone in Foxborough will, of course, receive a benefit by the enhanced vegetation management. And essentially, that means we're gonna go up higher and out wider and make an enhanced effort to clear what's underneath the lines. Twenty feet over the top, eight feet wide, ten feet under, and, and, you know, trying to target removing the trees that will grow up and become the problem. We are planning a couple of reclosers to be installed on Main and Spring and Pierce Streets. Reclosers are protective sectionalizing devices. They sense a fault, they open, and they'll close right back in. That's what you see when the lights blink. Then they'll open again, is the fault still there? They'll close if the fault is not there, if the fault is there, they're gonna open and lock open. So it assists in quickly responding, restoring outages from, you know, a tree branch that might fall. And the branch burns or breaks free, and then there's no need for an outage. We will get notified that the recloser operated, we'll go and patrol and see what we find. So a few of those are scheduled in the, in the spring and the summer of next year. And lastly, I wanted to highlight that we did a coordinated exercise, a training exercise with the fire department. On the fourth of November at Eddie George Field, we did a med flight, Boston med flight, coordinated training exercise with a helicopter, which was a pretty, pretty cool exercise. I think the fire department appreciated it, and we participated, appreciated the collaboration as well. So with that, quick update, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
There was an area, you remember near, like, Main Street, that they kept having outages, and Ann said something was being replaced. That seems to have been corrected, I don't remember what the, something was old, and there was like seven of them. Do you remember that?
Yeah, I think that was some of the.
That's the reclosers? So that's them, okay. So that's completely done now?
There have been reclosers that have been replaced in town over the last year.
Okay. Those must have been the ones initially that Ann said needed to go right of-way?
Yeah, there was some Edwards Road area was having some issues leading into that.
I think they did enhanced trimming as well.
Okay, okay.
Because the recloser will see the, you know, the momentary when a, a line, when a branch falls on the line. And, you know, they, they've been out there, some of them, for many years, so we've placed the fleet of them over time.
Any other questions? Always comes up before the winter, you know? Just coming off of a power outage at my house last weekend, but.
Was it during the Patriots game?
Yeah, yeah, it was like noon to two, yeah.
It was twelve fifty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a tree on Walnut Street.
Okay.
And I got two texts.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What the heck, the game's starting soon.
I know. And I heard that they were questioning whether Belichick was responsible for it. Because there were problems with the communication on the, on the other team's side, on the Jets' side.
Yeah, there was. Issues, uh, yeah, at the stadium too.
Interesting, yeah.
So it was a recloser, actually, the recloser opened. And it was, we were able to isolate and sectionalize, I think it was down to about six hundred. Then it was finally down to about two hundred, and then there might have been like thirty customers that were out for a number of hours while we, that probably missed the game, or went to their cousin's house.
Yeah, so as of right now, it's been pretty good, so knock on wood, everyone. Winter's coming.
Where do you guys see electric costs going, though?
Pardon?
Where do you see electric costs going?
Electric costs, it, I mean, who could have seen what, what has happened this year? And I, I think it's clearly a function of, you know, sort of the world market for energy.[1761.78] And I think it's clearly a function of, you know, sort of the world market for energy. And I would also say that what we've seen in the, you know, with the winter rates, which are significantly higher than they were, is it's full exposure to the market from the, you know, the competitive supplier process that's out there. We are required to bid every six months, and we're required to pass on the costs that we get from those bids, and we're also prohibited from making a penny off that. So this is simply a pass-through of, you know, what we're seeing in the market for energy. So as to what it looks like next year, I mean, in my career, I've never seen it anywhere near 33 cents a kilowatt hour for supply. Yeah, I, I don't know what it looks like next year. You know, I think the world market for energy, and Russia and Ukraine are a big part of that, Europe's demand for natural gas, there's a lot of factors in it.
All right, great. Anything else before we move into the DPW update? No? Okay, all right, thank you for your patience this evening.
Thank you. Nice to stay and listen to.
Of course, yeah.
Me too.
You can stay the whole meeting if you want.
You don't get a lot of help on Thanksgiving week.
You guys plan the outfits all gray.
Yeah, that's right. Gray team.
Well, hello. So for anybody at home that doesn't know, I'm Chris Gallagher, I'm the DPW director. I have Lance Del Peori, the town engineer, with me, and Bob Worley, the water superintendent. So we're here to give you a little update. I'm going to share my screen. That's how I do. There it is, all right. So just to give general update, we'll try to keep it brief, although every time we stopped editing the PDF, there was something else that came up, and it was like, all right, now we're up to 12 slides, so we're trying, we're going to try to get through this. You know, one of the things on, and Lance, you know, thank you to him for helping me edit the PDF, the PowerPoint, because I'm a true engineer, and it was black text and no background, and we added some pictures and trying to spice it up, spruce it up a little bit, so. You know, one of the things that I like to point out, and Lance threw this in here, Public Works makes it happen. You know, there's been a national push over the last decade to really get our story out there as far as what we do in Public Works. One of the things that the New England chapter of the American Public Works Association did a few years ago was they actually commissioned a video with actually Gil Santos as the narrator, based around this time of year, high school football games on Thanksgiving, to really highlight everything that Public Works does. And it's a video I typically try to share through social media this time of year, so I'll be pushing that out tomorrow. So it's a, it's a pretty good movie, pretty good clip, I think it's about five minutes long, and, you know, kind of highlights some of the stuff that, that we do here, that we're going to talk about in the next few minutes, so. Quickly, we are made up of highway, tree park, water and sewer, equipment maintenance, engineering, including GIS, and, you know, kind of the backbone, the administration staff that's in the office, paying all the bills, answering the phone calls, talking to the residents, keeping us, you know, keeping us straight and, and moving forward. So some of the projects we have going on, you know, West Street dam reconstruction, this is, this is certainly the biggest project we have going on right now. We've been working for five-plus years to get to this point from, you know, the first Phase 1 inspection that we were required to do out there through the state, to actually design and permitting. Iron Pacella's out there, they are, they have removed the existing culvert. We are working on, they are working on getting rid of some of the rock that is out there. I know Roger always called it Roxborough, and this, this piece of the project is holding true. Hopefully, it doesn't run the rest of the project, but there are certainly some large rocks out there buried in the ground that they're working on removing. So this is something we are actually, you know, working with National Grid on, and Bob's been great coordinating. There's some pole relocations over there that need to happen, so Bob was, you know, instrumental in getting the right people from National Grid on the site, coordinating with the contractor to make sure that stuff gets done. It's a very tight site, so there's some close coordination that needs to happen in order to get that moving forward. So they're out there, they're working on it now. I'd love to say it's going to be a great Christmas present to open that road back up. We'll see how things go. All the materials are on site, so they do have everything they need to, to put that roadway back together, that dam back together, once they get the culvert replaced and the poles relocated, so fingers crossed it's, it's Christmas. And then after that, we are working on the water main project, which Bob will touch base on a little bit, in a little bit. One of the other projects we're working on, this is actually a complete streets project, so East Street and Coacasset Street. As you go under the railroad bridge, you know, East Street goes up to the left to go towards Sharon, and then continues on to Mansfield. This is something we identified a number of years ago as, as kind of a safety design. So that island in the middle, the way you come off of East Street from Sharon going towards Mansfield, it's a, it's a hard look over your right shoulder to see the traffic coming under the bridge. I know there's been a few accidents there in the past, so this is something we put on the prioritization plan. We actually got construction money funded through Complete Streets, so that design has been completed. We're going to bid that out this, this winter, so that that work can take place come springtime into next summer.
You think that's worse than South Street and 106?
Um.
That's a tough one.
That's another tough one. They're, they're similar. They, I think the right, when you come from Sharon and go towards Mansfield.
Yeah.
It's a real hard look over your right shoulder to see it back under that bridge there. But the flashing stop sign has helped, but there's still some concerns, so this is one that, that's being moved forward. It'll include, you know, a relocated sidewalk, the crosswalk will actually come up to the intersection. Right now, you go, as you're coming in and you go turn under the railroad bridge, it's, it's close to the railroad bridge, it's away from the intersection, it's not really a safe spot for that crosswalk to be, so this will pull everything up to that, that new T, T intersection instead of the, the Y that exists now.
Chris, how do we come to those decisions about that kind of work?
So, that was one, when we went through the Complete Streets process a few years ago, we came up with a project list of about 40 projects. We worked with the engineering group, Beta Group helped us through that at the time. We did have public input meetings. At, at the time, there was not a lot of public input, so it was kind of left up to the town staff, and, you know, some, a select few residents actually showed interest. We put that plan together, and now it's really what we think will get us that grant funding opportunities.
Okay.
So that was one that, you know, we ended up with about $350,000. We've applied for some other projects on that list, that plan, and the state has turned around and said, it's not good enough. So those are things we're kind of keeping notes on. We were talking about it earlier today, you know, about actually going through that list and, you know, getting some more public input on it, maybe revising that list. It is a process to go through it with the state every time we revise it, so it is something we're going to work on, you know, to, to see have the priorities changed. Those projects were grouped, because the maximum funding we would get is about $400,000 from the state on those projects. So something like the Oak Street sidewalk, you know, repairing that sidewalk, replacing that sidewalk, you know, was broken down into five or six different projects on that list of 40, just based on the funding piece of it.
Okay, thanks.
So some of the other transportation improvements we've been working on, you know, based on our pavement management plan, we did pave some roads this year, we did Morrell Elizabeth, Walden Farms, and William Drives, it's a neighborhood off Oak Street, for anybody that's not familiar with it. We did the stretch of Mechanic Street from the railroad tracks out towards Chestnut Street, and then actually in conjunction with the developer on Glenwood Ave, he actually funded the, the paving of Glenwood Ave from his development all the way down to Baker Street. We're also working on sidewalks, kind of heard it last year, there's, there's a desire to do sidewalk work. Again, it was, you know, kind of the first time in, in almost nine years that I've heard several people making that statement, that they're looking for it. So, you know, we are looking at adding that into our annual paving plan. It is going to become a, a funding issue at some point in time, where we're taking away right now from our street paving to do sidewalk work. Sidewalk work is more expensive per foot than paving is for roadways. So, you know, we actually have under contract LAL Construction. We are working on having them begin actually this upcoming Monday. They're going to do the section of Mechanic Street sidewalk from, again, the railroad tracks up to the Hearn School. They're going to do some handy, the accessible ramps that are required by ADA. They're going to take that sidewalk on the school side and remove it and replace it, so they're, they're going to start work, they're going to do it piece by piece, you know, once winter really sets in, it gets too cold, the asphalt plants shut down, they'll have to come back in the spring and complete that work.
Anything, I know when we talked about, I had said, you know, in front of Cumberland Farms, a lot of kids cross there, and there's one crosswalk all the way by the RE/MAX building, then all the way uptown, and, you know, kind of having something in the middle, because that's where I see, you know, a lot of the kids crossing. I don't know if that's, if that's something that we've figured into that, because we do have to have those ramps, right?
Yes, we did actually discuss that when we're out there with the contractor. We found it's not centered on the Cumberland Farms, and it is to the side closer to the tracks.
Okay, great.
We felt like it being centered would actually be a bit too hazardous, because you have two entryways, vehicles entering and exiting, and having that centered on Cumberland Farms would just be too hazardous, so we moved it over.
No, I think, yeah, by the tracks is kind of where.
Right, so that's, that's where we did, so the contractor will be installing.
Okay, good. I always, every time I drive by there, I feel like I see kids crossing there.
Yep. Yeah, they, they come, you know, either from middle school or the Y, and they walk right past the one at Napones Street, and then they cross, you know, right where they feel it's most comfortable.
I think a boy from the borough got hit by a car years ago, right?
Yeah, right there, yeah. I mean, the kids, they should go up to the common, but they don't, you know, so I'm glad to hear that we're able to do that, you know, at the time and during the projects that are going on, so.
Chris, I asked Bill about this recently, but, um, streetlights, are those part of this, or are they a separate?
We will talk about this later. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think it made it into a slide, but we can talk, it's in my, it's in my notes to talk about some streetlights, because I know that was, that was on the topic recently, so.
I kept adding stuff, I think as of like, end of today, I'm like, I don't know what I'm up with this.
That was interesting stuff.
And then, you know, tentative plan for, for 2023, again, we're looking at, across the street over here, we did the sewer project a number of years ago. We have been waiting for the redevelopment of that corner on Rock Hill Street, so whereas that's coming to a close next spring, you know, we are going to go over into that neighborhood, Market Street, Rock Hill, Centennial, we'll do some sidewalk work, we'll mill and pave that road and take care of that project. I didn't want to do it prior to that project, it just doesn't make sense, so I know they've been putting up with that for, for a number of years now, and I hope they're excited to see that it's, it's coming. We also have Hayden, Hill Street, Hitchcock, Harden, and the Dudley Estates neighborhood, which runs from, you know, Mechanic Street over to Beach Street. We just did some water main work over there this past year, so that'll be on, on our repaving, on our paving plan for next year. It is something that, I think it was nine or 10 years ago, we did a Cape Seal project on that road, just to kind of hold it together. We've done actually close to 25 miles of that Cape Seal product around town. It's held up well, it's a maintenance product, it's meant to just extend the life of it, it's not a full mill and pave or, or rebuild of the roadway. So it, it's really, those products are really five to seven years, we've stretched it out to nine or 10, so we've done pretty well with that product in that neighborhood, and then other places around town, so. And then we're going to get back to crack sealing, it's been a couple of years since we've done crack sealing, again, that's a maintenance product, you know, it helps prevent the water from, from getting into the roadway, under the roadway, causing heaving and potholes and that type of stuff, so we'll add that back into the, to the mix for next year for pavement management. And I'm going to toss it to Lance.
Well, I think Lee is familiar with this topic, after we had a brief meeting tonight to discuss the street parking around the common. You know, one of those discussions being the pickup parking, which we are now referring to as 10-minute parking. We're looking at three potential locations based on, you know, consolidating requests we've had in the past, and trying to approach this more holistically. The three pre-locations we're looking at currently are on Central Street on the bottom, right in, Central Street on, in front of South Pizza, and I think that, and the other ones, I think that's over by Primos currently, and just converting the two that are there just to a single 10-minute parking spot. We're looking potentially, those would just be from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, limiting them, just having a standardized timeframe, not to overcomplicate in terms of, you know, enforcement. But it's not an issue we're trying to push for voting tonight, just trying to bring it up to you guys to think about a little bit, get input. You probably want, we're going to try to get input from the businesses hopefully, and, you know, the residents on this as well. You know, it's, I think there's a need from what we've heard, but, you know, it's, it's up for debate, you know, in terms of what the perfect location might be. I think what we're trying to do is put them far enough apart, but also like at the ends of the parking lane, so, you know, you don't want them in-between parallel parking spots, so people are, you know, trying to constantly back in and out around each other. In addition to that, we have the accessible parking, street parking shown there. We're potentially going to, at least for now, eliminate the three handicap or accessible parking spots in the Central Street lot, and create one on the northern part of Central Street, close to the common. That was a request of the disability, Commission on Disabilities. I think it's, seems like a pretty reasonable request, but it'll ultimately be the board's decision whether or not we put that there. So if any comments or inputs, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I guess the other thing is, we just have spent a lot of time, like, literally meeting in parking lots, like, meeting in the Central Street lot, meeting in the Schneider Lot, looking, seeing what we can do. You know, if you haven't spent a lot of time out there, you know, Dennis, I know you're newer to town, go in that lot and look at the layout. You know, I think we did the best we can, but, you know, even talking about plowing and snow management, getting the businesses to work together for dumpsters, if you go in there, they're literally like thrown about the parking lot everywhere, so trying to get the businesses to come together. We do have that $50,000 grant, we kind of put our heads together to see what we want to do with that, and kind of if we can manage the dumpsters and have paths, then dumpsters are put back in the right place versus just wherever the driver picks it up and puts it back, it could block spaces, it could block for snow removal. So getting everyone to work together, get some input on how we spend that, that $50,000, and really getting people used to, you know, using those lots. I know, like, when I go to Central Street, no matter what I do, like, my habit is to go to the back. You know, there's spots out front, and sometimes I'll pull up out front, but there's, you know, I never have trouble out back. And then I don't know if you're going to talk about the, were you going to talk about the Rock Hill corner at all, a little bit more?
Um, we're still looking into that. I mean, yes, we did talk about potentially doing something over on Rock Hill Street to accommodate drop-offs, but I think we need to look a little closer at, you know, spatially how that, how that would work. I did take a quick look, I drove by there, I think, I mean, the width works, but it looks like, you know, in terms of you're going to, you'd essentially have to block the, you know, the crossing there to, to make it work, so I'm not going to say that's, you know, a done deal yet, I have to, I'm going to look a little closer.
So we have, we have a really keen eye, though, on that north end of the common, because I think there's a lot of focus there right now with Shovel Town, you know, opening maybe the first week of December. You know, I know if anyone went by this weekend when they had the open house, and there was a 2 o'clock show for, you know, Willy Wonka, it was busy. We did bring up accessible spots down that end, because there definitely is a little bit of a gap, but, you know, the experts had kind of explained to me that they're, they're all on hills, and those aren't great spots for accessible parking. Shovel Town will have two handicap spots out back, these are on private property, not, not on theirs. They will have two other 10-minute spots up that section for, you know, whether you're going in to grab a growler, or you're, you know, someone from DoorDash, and then a couple, you know, of the regular patron spots, and it sounds like they do have an arrangement also with Bethany Church for parking over there. So, you know, that, I know the focus might be on that end, and there's going to be some bumps, like, I'm sure people are going to think it's busy, but, you know, I think it'll be a little bit of growing pains, almost like there was when, when Union Straw opened up. So I think if we all keep in touch and, you know, see how things are working, you know, we're very much on trying to make sure that it works, and works for the businesses, the residents, the patrons.
And certainly let people know there is parking.
Yes.
You just might have to walk a block or two.
Have the drone photography to prove it.
So, I mean, we spend a lot of time talking about parking, and it would just be great to have some of the businesses and, you know, who, other people engage. I feel like a lot of the times, it's, you know, we're trying to figure out what works, other people engage. I feel like a lot of the times it's, you know, we're trying to figure out what works, you know, but would love some additional feedback and, you know, just parking is limited up there. And, you know, how can we put temporary parking or 10-minute parking where it makes sense without kind of overdoing it as well? You know, but I think we do have a policy that we'll probably roll out for the next meeting, but didn't even want to put this out there until everyone had a chance to look at it, digest it, kind of see it in action and then, you know, take this to a, to another meeting.
And I thi- I think it just goes with, you know, we're, we're really trying to pay attention to what's happening in the uptown area around the common. You know, there's a lot of changes coming. And we, we are aware of them and, you know, we are thinking about what's happening there and how we can improve that situation. You know, we just added six or seven, you know, striped parking spaces on Rock Hill. People were parking there, but now they're striped. They know which side of the street to park on, you know, that, that was an important step with existing conditions, you know, without even Shovel Town opening up, so. And we just expanded the Schneider parking lot. I think it's been talked about a few times. But, you know, that's, that parking lot went from 46 spaces to over 100. And we are working on signage. There's some new signage out there now to direct people down there. We are working on lighting. There's a couple solo lights down there. The Schneider floodlights are, are working. I think three out of the four are working, so, you know, we're working on making that a little more attractive for people to actually go out and park, park at and feel safe walking up from there. And I actually came by, came off of Baker Street coming here tonight and there's an event at the Orpheum and there was a flood of people walking up Bird Street. So I don't know if you saw it, Seth coming, coming over, but, so they're, they're finding places to park and, and there is parking, especially with that, the Schneider Lot. So we are looking at it, so.
And I was saying, you know, maybe if Christina can help us push people even for like light uptown. You know, we do forget about the Schneider Lot because it's new, but it is a great direct, you know, access point. So as much as people can, you know, give it a whirl, try it when you come uptown on Saturday. Are you going to talk about the snow management in the common in a little bit? Okay, then I won't go there, so.
But just before we let that go, we, we have, this is really a parking strategy more than it is anything. Because I'm actually impressed by the fact that we're really having, developing the strategy now because you have a new, you have new places opening. You have, you, we have, we have a lot of spaces in the downtown. We just never had a coordinated effort to try and identify them so that people can actually go to them with a proper signage, which we, we put out, we've put out, placed all around town. But you now have an anchor parking lot on both sides. You have Schneider on one end, Town Hall Parking on the other end. You have parking in the middle. You have parking at, at the, at the church as well, which is under agreement for, for, with, with the new, the new Shovel Town. So, and there's a lot of street parking too. So I, you know, I came from a place that had literally no parking, but they still made it work. This is, you have parking here. We just have not put the right strategy together to make it work.
And the thing is really looking at it as a whole versus like, you know, a knee jerk reaction to individual, you know, requests really.
Exactly.
And then just one more thing while we're talking about the common in uptown and then we'll move on. But, you know, part of that too is making it a little more pedestrian friendly and safer. So we actually have received a grant for some more of the flashing pedestrian signs. So we are going to order those and get those installed. You know, talking today, there was a few different ideas of where they could go around the common. The mid-block crosswalk on School Street, I think is, is one that needs it, you know, as people are coming around the top end, coming off of Main Street. I think that's a great spot for, for those activated ped signs. And then we were actually looking at the Central Street crosswalk as well, where people are coming, exiting the common or taking a right turn from Cell Street to make that a little more visible too, as people are crossing, you know, from across Central Street itself. So look for those in the future.
That will slow the traffic generally anyway, so, which is a good thing.
Yeah. All right. Lance, talk a little bit, Sidewalk Master Plan.
All right. So a while back, as part of the Sidewalk Master Plan we're trying to put together, we did put out an online survey. We had 113 respondents, so not terrible, not amazing, but not terrible. So, but the feedback we got, just a few highlights, you know, we talked about potentially, you know, just, you know, the theme of it being, you know, how do we do more with less essentially? You know, we, we have limited budgets. We want to do, you know, the best we can with what we have. You know, there's the conversation of bike lanes that kind of circles up now and again. So one of the concepts we just wanted to put out there, you know, and just to get people's opinion on, was the idea of, you know, expanding certain sidewalks when able from five feet to 10 feet, which is allowable by Mass DOT standards, you know, to kind of create a combined, you know, pedestrian bicycle area. You know, certainly, you know, a lot safer to have, you know, pedestrians and cyclists together than, you know, cyclists and vehicles. You know, cyclists will always lose to a vehicle. So, but, you know, in general, slight majority appeared to be in favor of that. Got some colorful responses, you know, for and against, as you tend to do with some of these surveys. But, you know, so not, not, you know, outrightly opposed at least. In terms of the next question, we talked about potentially removing sidewalks from certain neighborhoods that had two sidewalks in low-traffic residential areas. Where there is two on the side roads, a lot of these old subdivisions, you know, they have sidewalks both sides of the road. You know, do we, you know, spend, you know, probably more money than we'd even pay, you know, cost us to repave the roads in that area to redo both of those sidewalks? Or do we just focus on, you know, redoing one sidewalk and basically, you know, either removing or leaving in place the, you know, the other sidewalk for the time being? And then allowing that sort of, you know, you know, giving us more, you know, capacity to then close network gaps around town. Because we're investing all of that money just to repair, you know, duplicate sidewalks. When, you know, we want to expand the network. We can't even pay for what we have currently. We need to, you know, be more creative than that and try to, you know, eliminate, you know, excess. It seemed like most people, you know, appeared to be in favor of that generally. You know, I did put six as undecided trying to, some people kind of went off on certain tangents. I wasn't as sure clear where they stood on that, so I just put them as undecided.
Some places where sidewalk, you know, nature has taken over sidewalks are just.
They're, they're essentially not sidewalks anymore.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, we do, it's definitely a priority. We want to take seriously and start investing in and we're trying to do. But it's, it's costly, so we're just trying to be creative on that. And then this was just part of this survey. It was just, you know, looking at, so the, you know, of the respondents, you know, you know, who's, who's walking with their kids, I guess, is the idea at school. Only 9% had their kids walk to school. 28% rode the bus. Then over 50, a little over 50%, did not have children currently enrolled in school. So it'd be great to see those numbers improve with time, you know, if we can, you know, close network gaps, make things safer for people to, you know, have, start having their kids walk to school and feel safer about it. It'd be, I think it'd be a good win for us, so.
Lance, I think it's a point to point out too, there are standards for sidewalks that have to be met with ADA requirements. And I think that, that sort of gets lost in discussion sometimes, but it makes it more costly because of that. And I think that we want to be compliant with that. And I just recently, I was telling you guys the story the other day. I went through Attleboro the other day and, and saw them building new sidewalks with telephone poles right in the middle of the sidewalk, which makes, serves no purpose because you can't get a wheelchair down the sidewalk. And, and mailboxes were in the middle of the way. They didn't put anything behind the sidewalk, which is what they should have done. They kept it all right where it was and they just put concrete around them, which made no sense. So I think the, the right way to build a sidewalk, of course, is so that it's unimpeded. It's good for both maintenance in terms of snow, snow removal, as well as the fact that it allows people in wheelchairs to, to access it properly.
I agree.
And to that, you know, the sidewalk, the survey that Lance put together, you know, came out of ADA Transition Plan that we're required to have, you know, it's one of those things we're required and it's important to do it to, to remove any impediments for somebody, you know, traveling down the sidewalk so that they can get there safely. So we did a full survey of the sidewalk network in town. You know, anywhere that there's a street crossing, a crosswalk, you know, is supposed to have a, an accessible ramp. So I think we have over 300 that we need to get to. So, you know, as long as, and this is, you know, as long as we're working on it, we keep ourselves out of trouble. But we want to get to as many as we can, as quickly as we can, you know, for the benefit of everybody traveling around town. You know, when, last summer, not this past, a year ago, when we did Cell Street, we did 25 of those ramps in-house with the Highway Department. You know, those are things that if you bring a contractor in and, you know, you know, a lot of these towns are just hiring it out, you know, it's expensive. So, you know, for the cost of a pallet of concrete, I think we did about 25 of those, those ramps in-house with our, with our labor forces, which again is doing more with less. Because they're looking for a dollar amount, how much are you going to spend every year? We kind of turned it around and said, well, we're going to do a percentage of the, of the ramps every year. Regardless of the cost, we'll take that in-house and, and can do that. The contractor on Mechanic Street will do that as part of their bid work, but there's only six, I think seven ramps installed in that, so. Stormwater is Lance too.
All right, so a quick stormwater management update. So the Ponza River Water Association, as usual, helped us with a lot of our public education outreach materials. They've been a great partner. You know, we have routine meetings with them, discuss stormwater issues in the community and just, you know, partner with our neighboring towns and consolidate efforts. I mean, it's been overall, I mean, we do, we, we pay, you know, a bit of money to be a member of that, but, you know, the cost savings we get back in return is significant because of that consolidation of effort. So it's been a good partnership, you know, look forward to continue with it. Part of that, what they did for us recently was help us with our phosphorus and nitrogen loading calculations as part of this year's permit requirements. You know, we're still kind of working, you know, with EPA to see how towns are going to manage those loading calculations and their responsibility for those. Thankfully Foxborough seems to be in a pretty good place comparatively to a lot of, you know, people in the watershed. So, you know, I don't expect, you know, that we're going to be severely impacted with the expectations around those. Additionally, you know, the routine catch basin cleaning and street sweeping. We have contractor in town currently doing a catch basin cleaning. We also have our own older truck that when it works, we send out there. You know, so we're, we're doing the best we can with what we have and the resources and funding available. Part of the issue around that is we don't have enough budget currently to dispose of the material properly. So we're just currently storing it in town. And that's part of, part of the issue with the limited funding, you know, because there is, you know, we do bit budget, you know, we do get quotes to have it removed, but it's just not feasible at this time. So, you know, our plan is to, you know, put it together as a larger item, hopefully get maybe able to dispose it more cost effectively at a later date. Instead of just as part of the contractor doing their bid for this work. I think it'd probably be more cost effective just to individualize that aspect of it. BNP retrofit opportunities, so that's best management practices. Basically, we had to, as part of this permit the past year, identify at least five areas in our town where we could do retrofit and improve sort of green infrastructure for stormwater treatment. Through the MVP grant we were awarded in the past year, we, you know, did a, at least, I think we got like eight or nine through them and the NEPA helped us get a couple. We've constructed, we constructed the last two. It wasn't this past year, but previously we did the jellyfish filters on Orange Road and then we constructed the basin over at the Charter School, which has seemed to be working very well, so I'm very happy with that. And then just in general, just as a finer point for a later discussion, the stormwater utility discussion, we had a meeting with the board. I don't know, it might have been, I'm sure, I don't think Dennis, you might have not even been on the board at that time. We had Mike Gillette come in to discuss what was done in his community. So this is just how most towns are managing the unfunded mandates that are being thrown at them by the federal and state government, you know. In our, in our, for our case, it's the state government's kind of taking ownership of that permit. So it's really the state, you know, is pressuring towns to, you know, clean more frequently, you know, dispose of things in certain method, methods and it all adds up and, you know, costs are just continuing to increase. And, you know, it's, you know, most towns have just created what is essentially a stormwater utility, a separate enterprise fund and a fee structure to, to compartmentalize those costs and to, to manage them. You know, in addition to that, you know, I'm tacking on the DCR dam orders. So, you know, it's another sort of aspect that I lumped together with stormwaters that, that we have like six or seven dams in our community that we own or co-own with another partner. And, you know, we, we haven't had enough funding historically to really maintain those at the levels they probably should have been maintained. But thankfully, Bill has worked with us, given us money from the ARPA funding, which is, the state appreciates seeing that progress. I emailed them and notified them that, you know, we're moving forward with this. We have a contractor to start moving forward on the inspection evaluation work. So I'm excited to see that moving forward and the state is too. But that's part of sort of that unfunded mandates and would probably be looped into the, that stormwater utility if and when that's created.
All right. We need to get Bob in the mix. We got a lot of, a lot of projects moving forward. You know, finishing design and permitting on some things and, you know, looking forward to some, some construction next, next season. So I'll let Bob touch on some things.
Yeah, part of what we're going to do, we need a new water main on West Street, which, once the dam's finished, we can work on that because that part of town has always been troublesome. I think we've had five, six water main breaks up there and it's one of those neighborhoods that's a dead end. So once the pipe breaks, everybody up there loses water. So that's a priority. We're working on a transmission main to bring the untreated wells at Sprague Street up to Witch Pond Treatment Plant. So the benefit here is we have wells with iron and manganese that needs to be removed. We have a treatment plant that's under capacity. So if we bring the water that needs to be treated to the plant that can treat it, it's a definite benefit. And also, we really can't build anything on Sprague Road because of endangered turtle habitat. And, you know, there's another pinch point in town is on North Street. The, hydraulically, the water main acts as if it's only four inches in diameter. You know, it's a definitely old clogged pipe that needs to be, that whole part of town needs to be upgraded just for velocity and just to have the water move around properly.
Just a question about that, Bob. Is it possible to reline that pipe or is it, do you have to go with a whole new?
It's just way too small.
Too small, okay.
See, with relining, you can take an existing pipe, clean out the crud, line it.
Yep.
But you can't, that process can't make it bigger to have more carrying capacity.
All right, thanks.
And coming up is our friend PFAS. Right now, fortunately, all of our active wells are under the Mass State limit of 20 parts per trillion, which is a good thing. We are awaiting to see what EPA is going to do. Probably by the end of this year, they might drop that down to 10. At that point, it's better than a $30 million problem to try to treat. But we've, we're working with design engineers. We're applying for SRF funding ahead of the game, just in case we have to build it.
We won't be the only ones.
Right. And that's, that's part of the problem because right now we're under the limit of 20. Many other communities are over it, so unfortunately they will get priority for the funding.
All right, and, and our other favorite friend, watering restrictions.
Right. We like to bring this up just to remind everybody, it is not us. It's Mass DEP. In our permit, it says thou shall have water restrictions. They will be from May 1st to September 30th. No matter how much water we have, we must have the restriction. The only problem, well, not problem, but going forward, our permit's being changed. So we are going to be linked to the drought management task force drought level. So if the state declares a level, say like last year, we got up to a level three critical drought, we will be forced to have no watering, regardless of how much is in our wells.
So this is something that as Foxborough has been progressive of building these new treatment plants and, and rebuilding wells, every time we do that and we go to get a permit from the state, DEP and Water Resources Commission, they get to look at our permits and they get to put more restrictions on us. So this is one thing that, again, we have applied for more work down at Witch Pond. We're working on rebuilding a well. They reopened our permit from going back to.
2001?
Yep. And it was recommended prior to, to now that we would implement these restrictions based on the drought level within the state. It's no longer a recommendation from them. It's a requirement. So again, it's, it's not a supply issue. I've, I've said it at planning board meetings. I think I've said it.
Not that we're not building, we're building too much.
No, and, and we have, you know, one of the things we've been doing is for, you know, a long time is leak detection in around town. So we're actually finding where our water mains are leaking water, fixing those leaks and we're, you know, we're, we're restricting what we're actually pumping on a daily basis to the point of.
This year, we found a really big leak in March. So year to date, this year over last year, we're about 160 million gallons less.
Wow.
Which is a huge amount.
That's a huge amount.
And talking about mains too, someone had asked with, with the Walnut Street project potentially happening. And that I've heard is another kind of troublesome one. Would that be maybe further down the line for replacement? As that project maybe comes to fruition for the people in that area?
Yeah, that, that's one, we haven't seen that as a, a hydraulic issue.
Okay.
A flow issue. It's, it's just the age of the system.
Okay.
And that was, that's something that goes into a funding issue. You know, a number of years ago, the Warren Street Commission decided that they were going to fix the water problems in Foxborough and they committed to that. And, you know, as. And, you know, as, as customers of that water system, we've seen that in our rates. But we now have three treatment plants, you know, to remove that iron and manganese. So we don't have 40 to 50 phone calls coming in with people with, you know, Coca-Cola coming out of their faucet. So, um, we had been building up the rates so that it would include about a million dollars a year worth of capital improvements. So that would be pipe replacement. That'd be, you know, the unseen utility underground. That's in, in our rates coming up in the next year or two. So we can start doing that, kind of what used to be like a mile of pipe replacement every year. If PFAS comes through, it's, everything's out the door. Because then we're looking at that, that expense. So, but yes, there, there is some, you know, we do have some issues on the Walnut Street issue. We may be able to line that pipe like Bill was talking about earlier to, to make it structurally sound again. But I don't know that that's a capacity issue down there.
I mean, we got a break at the end of the season last year with, you know, some of the rain, this year with some rain and, you know, things improved. But it's a big issue because like probably a lot of people here, I have a good sized lawn, you know? But the day having a good sized lawn, you know, is gone, you know, it doesn't make any sense anymore. Nobody thinks things are gonna improve. They're only gonna really deteriorate further going forward if the climate changes, everything we're expecting. So it's really gonna be time to rethink your whole approach to landscaping, what you really do, you know?
Yeah.
You know, right now I'm still paying the same landscaping costs, if not more, but the return on those costs is diminished. So I, I know I'm speaking for probably majority of people in town that are homeowners. This is, and it's really not a good solution, you know, on the horizon. Other than to, speaking for myself, really rethink the whole approach to landscaping and what's affordable and what's realistic as we go forward.
Silver lining, I thought how much I saved on having the lawn mowed.
What?
How much I saved having the lawn mowed.
Yeah.
I think it was like six to eight weeks that it was just, you know?
Yeah.
It came back though.
I planted clover in my front lawn.
Oh, really?
Well, and you're, you're right Dennis, it's, um, I mean, we're used to, the, the, this area of the country, you know, having green grass. But you know, you go out west, you go to Arizona, Las Vegas, it's, you know, rocks and different, the landscaping is different. And that's because of, because of the lack of rain. So, yeah, I think it may be as time goes on, we're gonna, we, we might see people changing.
Right.
You know, what, what they're, um, what we're, you know, what we're used to just because of the water.
All right. Good Bob?
Can I ask a question, can I ask a question just while we're, um, it might be you, Chris, and maybe Bob? Any, any word, I think maybe some of our, um, people from Summerfield, Cannon Forge were trying to get in touch. We've heard through the grapevine, is there eventually going to be a project with, um, that sewer flow that we sold a couple of years ago to Sharon? And, uh, we're hearing now that it's gonna have to come, come to, cause that's where the sewer flows, right through, um, Summerfield and Cannon Forge. And we're hearing things about the pipes not big enough and maybe that, that's gonna be a project coming?
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of sections of the pipe through that, um, that run that would need to be upgraded in size, um, to handle the flow. So that was something we did prior to selling the capacity to Sharon Gallery. We did a downstream analysis. It showed that there were sections of pipe that need, were undersized. So those are things that he is responsible for doing. Um, you know, we will coordinate, um, with the association at the time of those, those move forward.
Well, and it was, it was coming to, um, a conversation because they're thinking about possibly at some point doing the roads over. So, um, you know, somebody brought up and, and we, at one of our some field meetings, uh, we had our president, who was gonna kind of meet with the other presidents of the other two associations. And I said, you, you really need to find out what the timeline is this, cause the last thing you want to do is spend all that money to, I mean, they're talking about not just, um, chip sealing. They're gonna, the roads are about time to come up and be repaved. And I said, you don't want to do that and then find out that they're gonna be torn up for, you know? And I'm not even sure if it, how much of that, like you said, there's areas. I don't even know how much is in us.
Right.
Uh, has somebody been in touch with you guys?
Yeah, I've, I've had some contact, yeah. And I, I need to put that back in my list and reach back out to them. I haven't heard from the developer recently, but, um, if he's gonna do some stuff, he's gonna do it.
And, and so the, the, and one of the reasons I brought up too, is there, for them to do that, is there some type of, so I'm guessing the cost would be on their end to, you know, cause, cause the other thing too is I, you know, I told them, I said, you need to find out if they're gonna tear the roads up, maybe there is some type of mitigation or something for our association to, I, I think it'd be best to coordinate everything to, to happen at similar time.
I'll work, yeah, I'll, I'll bring that back up.
Awesome.
We can work through that.
Thanks.
So snow and ice, it, it certainly got cold the last few days. Um, we, we kind of missed fall, but, um, so it's snow and ice coming up. We, we are lucky in Foxborough, um, and I, I'm gonna say that and knock on wood at the same time. We have about 20 pieces of equipment that are, um, hired out as contractors. So those are plows, trucks, front end loaders, backhoes, um, as well as the drivers. And we have had several years in a row where they all come back. So, you know, when you're driving down 95 and you see the DOT signs or Franklin or, you know, whoever else is struggling. For whatever reason, they like us in Foxborough and, and we want them to keep coming back. So, um, we are, we're good on contractors. We've actually added a couple of pieces of equipment, um, that'll help us expedite parking lots. You know, typically the schools are after we're done with the storm. We'll go up and we'll clean all the streets and then we'll move into parking lots, whether it's the schools, town hall, um, the store buildings after that. These pieces of equipment will be, Bob Katz will have a 10 foot push box on the front of it. So they're really just good for, for parking lots. They're not gonna be able to run the street or anything like that. So the intention of that is they have them kind of run the south street corridor. So from the high school all the way to the Snyder parking lot and everything in between. So they can kind of maintain those parking lots as, if they're needed, you know, during, during and throughout a storm. And then they'll be there on site. They won't have responsibilities for cleaning up streets. So we should be able to get, you know, through the central street, um, veterans parking lot. You know, not only maintain it during the storms, but clear it a little bit quicker afterwards. We do have parking bans in Foxborough when, when it's declared, when it's a snow emergency. That's, you know, the town manager does declare those. Those are things that we put out via social media, um, try to post it on the, the town website if possible, if, if we can get to that. You know, that takes away any street parking, um, you know, so that we can effectively clear the streets in town. We have worked with the Snyder, um, Snyder Group to allow not only, you know, regular parking, but overnight parking during those declared snow emergencies. So that is something, if you see that come out, if you're on Bird Street, if you're on, um, you know, Mechanic Street, if you're on wherever else it might be, um, Rock Hill Street. You know, that parking lot is a good spot to go, get your street off, get your car off the street. You could leave there overnight until the snow emergency has been, um, rescinded. And then you can go back and park on the street again where you normally were.
Don't park like smack in the middle of the parking lot.
Yeah, I try to park along the edges.
On the edges, right.
You know, and, um, and those are things, again, we'll, we'll plow those parking lots. So you will be able to get out of there after the snow emergency's, um, been rescinded and removed. And then the central, the central street lot, um, you know, we've worked over the last couple of years to try to, we've worked with the businesses to try to clear that lot on a, on a timely basis, um, you know, with some of the, the restaurants over there now. Not only early morning, but you know, um, the, um, Foxborough Pizza's there now. So they're open a little bit later in night than some of the other, um, shops are. So we're trying to maintain that parking lot. We do the best we can. It is still, um, an issue where we can't plow all the way up against the buildings. You know, we can't be, you know, kind of nitpicking which staircases we, you know, push snow near or move snow away from. So there is still some work with the businesses over there to, to make sure that we're doing that effectively. You know, with our, within our limits, but there is some work that they're gonna have to continue to put into as they have in the past. To get in and out of the, the back of those parking lots, um, the back of the stores. And, you know, something we've talked about the last few years is when do we haul snow away? You know, typically it's if we've got, you know, two feet of snow on the ground, we've got snow banks up, you know, four feet high. You know, and it's gonna stay cold. We'll go and we'll haul that snow out of there. Something we'll work on this year and, and I've, you know, kind of put into places that, you know, within 48, 72 hours after a storm. With an anticipated extra foot traffic, a lot more foot traffic around the common. In that parking lot on Central Street, you know, we will haul that snow away, um, as is needed. You know, a lot of times it's, if it's a couple inches and it's gonna be sunny and warm, we try to let the sun do its thing. Sometimes it's a cost, cost saving measures to not put that overtime, cause it's all done at nighttime. So that's something we're gonna work on too, moving forward.
How about uptown sidewalk pedestrian, snowstorm? That always comes up too.
Yep. So we have, um, we do have one sidewalk machine that stays around the common. Along with the front end loader that, that plows around there. So they work in, in conjunction to, you know, get the snow off, you know, if it's slowing down, if it doesn't, if it doesn't look like it's gonna build up, they'll go off. We do have other sidewalks we try to maintain throughout the storms. Again, if you've got a shovel and you got a storefront that's open, if, you know, you, you looking at customers in the door, feel free to help us out. You know, the, the, the employee who does plow around there has been doing it for close to 30 years. This may very well be his last winter doing it. He's had a pretty good relationship with those business owners that have been there for a while, um, and does try to work with them. Make sure he's not, you know, we don't push it towards the building. We push everything out to the street. The flurrying loader takes that stuff away and moves it down, you know, down the street. But, um, feel free to, to grab a shovel and help out if, if somebody's, you know, got a business and they've got, and they're open.
And be aware of not making big banks too, like on the sidewalk that came up last year. I think down like on your block too, you know, so be conscious of where you're.
There was one, I literally took a shuttle shovel and went up just cause, you know, the people were walking out in the street. So, so who is ultimately responsible for sidewalks in front of businesses on the common? Well, legally it's the business owners. Okay. You know, by state law, it's, it's on them. But, you know, it's been part of, you know, our job function as long as I've been here and prior to that, that we do run the sidewalk machine around the, the, you know, storefronts. We go up, up through the middle of the common, you know, we do have a machine that does that work. So, uh, you know, legally it is, it is as state law says on the, on the property owner to clear the sidewalks, but. Cause there are places that the plow can't get through, uh, directly on the common. Yeah. Somebody needs to take a shovel too. Yeah, there is one. I'll do it if I got to. There is one on, you know, in front of Toddson's there, um, where that tree, tree and the wall kind of come together. That's the one. I've shove, I've gotten out and shoveled that one too. Usually it's after sitting for a while and I need to stretch a little bit, you know, do something a little physical and then just drive. But, um, so, yep, we'll, we'll keep working on it, you know? It's a work in progress. As things progress on the common, as everything else does, we'll, we'll change and adapt a little bit to, to meet the needs of the town.
So we don't see snow and ice for a while.
Yeah. Well, and I say this with no criticism because I think you guys, your, your crew, they do an amazing job. Just it, it, it's in, in my head, just because we have the Disabilities Commission here. Um, I know I reached out last year to Bill, um, and, uh, I just happened to notice obviously I have a, a husband who, who, we have a handicap placard for him. There's a lot of spa, I just, just out of curiosity, I wasn't doing it to cause trouble, cause I didn't reach back out to Bill. I made one phone call, but I drove to a number of places in town and the parking lots are clear and the ADA spaces were not clear. And some of them, um, it was mostly the schools and I know, so, and I think some of that falls on, I, I think you might've even told me you were gonna reach out to Tony, but, um, I happened to go and stop and show up just for the hell of it. I, I pulled into a public safety building. Disability spot, not clear. And so, um, like I said, I'm not saying it with criticism because I know you guys work hard. They were here tonight just maybe, just, uh, to pay a little more attention. Um, I mean, I could, I could show you, show you it at another time. I took, I took pictures just so, cause Lance, you're looking at me like, I don't believe her.
Not that I don't believe you.
No, no, no. But, but I, I did take photos just because I wanted some, you know, and I thought to myself at some point when I saw you guys. And of course, then the snow goes away and you forget about it. But they were here tonight and, uh, how hard they work. And I, it just, it, it was an observation and, um, I, I, I know it's not for lack of, uh, your guys work hard. They do a great job. So I just want to make sure you don't feel like I'm saying it with criticism, but just something for us to be aware of. We did a lot of talk about the AD spots around the common and, and stuff. And just so we're, um, you know, I mean, they're, they're out in the snow too. So we have to make sure we're taking care of that. So it's just an observation, that's all.
When we met with the Commission on Disabilities, they did correct me and say that the central street lot is not the central street lot. It's called the veterans lot. So.
And the new signs say central street veterans lot. There are some new signs up around, around, parking out back, there's one on Wall Street.
It was corrected.
So one of the other things that, uh, you know, I'm excited about, um, you know, is some upgrades to the DPW facility over on Elm Street. You know, the existing garage has, has served its purpose over the years, but, um, we have outgrown it, um, as the town has grown. You know, 50 years ago, it was, you know, the same, you know, three mechanics were there in the building, um, working on equipment. And the fleet in town has grown, um, quite a bit since that time. So, um, you know, we are working through that, that feasibility study process we've actually gone through. And, um, we had some preliminary design numbers or construction numbers come in. They kind of blew the roof off some stuff and we've gone back to them and, you know, kind of pulled that back a little bit in, in scale and scope. But so we continue to work on that. Um, we have a warrant, um, in the special town meeting for design funding. So we were working on finalizing that number to bring that forward in, in January to move forward with actually designing the space, um, the new, the new space. So, um, we are moving forward with that. One thing I want to highlight and I, we, we do need to talk about streetlights. This is kind of the feel-good, you know, some of the things we've done, um, again, to do more with less, um, grants. We have, um, received two shared streets grants. Um, one was for $50,000. It was for snow removal equipment. You know, really about kind of opening up the downtown area, um, throughout snowstorms and a little bit quicker afterwards. So we've picked up a couple of sidewalk machines. And actually we've been working with the state and the, the company that does our auctions for our, um, end of life equipment. Actually does work with DCR and Mass DOT. And we've been picking up pieces that are no longer useful to them, but are still in really good condition or good, good enough for us. And we've been getting equipment, you know, something that's worth about $200,000 brand new, um, 10, 12 years old. And we've been getting it for $2,500. Um, so some significant savings there. The activated PET signals that we talked about earlier, that's also through the shared streets grant, um, to improve pedestrian access around, around the common. The East Street, Cucasse Street redesigning construction, complete streets funding, $349,000. The MVP action grant, um, we worked through last year, $166,000. The Mass Works Grant, really, really pages to pages credit, you know, put a lot into that and getting that as well as, um, the representative and Senator here earlier tonight. But that application was, was quite a bit of work to get that done. And to her credit, you know, we were awarded the $4 million on that. And then. You guys helped with the design. So that was really important to point that out. And then just, um, to working on the dam, um, again, trying to get funding. Lance worked through with the Division of Ecological Restoration and actually picked up, you know, $62,000 to work through, both the crack rock pan, pond dam and the glue fracture pond dam as far as, you know, what the next steps are, um, with those dams. So, um, that kind of wraps up what I had, what we had prepped. And then obviously we would like to talk about some streetlights.
Yep.
So, um, my guess to that, um, I will stop sharing my screen. You know, something that, that comes up, you know, every now and then is, you know, streetlights. We have a little over a thousand of them in Foxborough. A number of years ago, we did a conversion project to change them from the metal halide, um, bulbs to LED. We're now seizing, seeing the cost savings in that after a five-year, um, payment, payment plan loan, um, to do that work. So, you know, we've seen our electricity reduction in the streetlight account, um, for the town. You know, it does come up, you know, people want more streetlights. We obviously are repairing them when they go out. But so it is something that comes up at, number of years ago. I dug out a policy for the Board of Selectmen that stated it was one light every third pole was the maximum that they were, they were looking for. I think at the time, you know, that it was done and I don't remember when the policy was put into place, but it was, you know, trying to reduce the electricity cost to the town. There's also a, a dark sky component, you know, that, that goes into that as well, where we're trying not to illuminate, you know, every inch of sidewalk or street around town. So there is a policy in place. I still, for the life of me, cannot like put my hands on that written policy. I know I saw it four or five, actually it was, I think we looked at the minute. I know I saw it four or five, actually, it was, I think we looked at the minutes for Selectmen's meeting, it was back in two thousand fifteen. The last time I saw that, but.
Might it be on Roger's computer for all, you know?
It's possible. So, we, you know, we do have that policy in place. You know, we do add them typically there at intersections, you know, crosswalks, you know, where you liked that extra, extra light. You know, it's not necessarily for driving purposes. There are some neighborhoods that, um, there are underground utilities. At the time that they were designed and built and permitted, you know, there were no streetlights required by the town. So, we have a few neighborhoods that that just don't have streetlights. There are others with underground utilities, but they have lampposts, um, they have posts. So, I guess with that kinda as the basis, if there are questions about streetlights, we're, we're here to talk.
Yeah, so, um, I, it was mentioned to me, um, on Halloween in reference to Baker Street. And then on mechanic from the common down to say, you know, the Ahern. There's some spot, there's some like dark areas sidewalk-wise. And I was, I think I counted today, there was probably four electrical poles with no lights on them. That may be fine, honestly. I I don't know the intent of streetlights, I, it's to light the road probably first and foremost. I don't know if there's the intent of illuminating sidewalks. If that's secondary or not considered when we're talking about streetlights, I'm just.
You know, it's. It's gonna vary what people are using them for from one town to the next.
Okay.
You know, there, there are several towns around us that have no streetlights. Anywhere in town. And they have no intention of putting them up. You know, what I would see the the purpose is, you know, at an intersection, um, at a crosswalk, you know, where you're gonna wanna see if there's something there, um, and kinda illuminate that space. There is obviously the benefit of, you know, sidewalks and and lighting up sidewalks, um, you know, which I think is where the every third pole, it gives you a spot to get to and to kinda see, you know, as you're moving forward. But I, you know, from, I would look at it as a safety standpoint where, you know, you really want the crosswalks and the intersections lit up, you know, first and foremost. And then, you know, really, what is the desire of the town after that? I was in, I drove through Westwood the other night and I went by the high school and it was, every single pole by the high school had a streetlight on it going down the sidewalk. And it was probably fifteen streetlights in, you know, a, a thousand-foot stretch. Like, it seemed like, I looked at it, I was like, knowing that we were talking about streetlights, I saw it, I'm like, wow, that's a lot of streetlights. Certainly not every third pole. So, you know, to that, it, you know, again, it's, it's a, the every third pole is a policy. There's nothing that says that, you know, we, there can't be a discussion as far as increasing that or decreasing it.
What's the cost of adding one from a, um, you know, construction and then?
So, to to add it to an existing utility pole, um, you're probably about five hundred dollars per fixture. So, that's the fixture itself, um, and then the labor to to do the installation.
And the operating cost beyond that.
Yep.
So, Chris, you're the go-to person, uh, if there's these kinds of issues?
Yeah. Yeah, they call us.
Well, we, we actually purchased the lights, uh, about, uh, eight years ago now, nine, seven.
So, that would have been.
We started the process.
This is our first, first budget year without that payment. So, we're six years ago now.
Yeah, we did a lease purchase arrangement.
Yes, we bought all of them.
We bought all the lights in, um, in hopes of, of, I've actually come to the point where we would no longer. The way it's currently structured is that you pay a lease to National Grid for all the streetlights, which, and the, and the payment was, in our opinion, ridiculous. Because the lights are often, more often than not, were not maintained properly and they were, and they were old and they were dysfunctional in many cases. So, we, one, a lot of towns have gone through this route of buying the lights, which we did. And then at the same time, we're able to gather, get a grant, uh, to help convert a lot of them to LED lights, which made them not only cheaper to own, but also cheaper to operate.
Right.
So, we had, we had a, it was a twofold improvement for the town. Just going, going back to what Chris said with respect to, you know, setting those policies in place, that was, and I was talking about this, but I, I don't wanna overstretch this issue. But this went back to the, 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 um, the Prop two and a half when it first came into play, number of years ago, back in the eighties. A lot of cities in towns actually set this as a way of saving money by instituting policies where you would do every other light or every three lights, as the case may be in Foxborough. And the idea, of course, being that it would be cheaper to run the lights and save the town money for, meaning the requirements of Prop two and a half. Folks have stayed with that and by, and during that period of time, uh, lights have become a lot more efficient. The, uh, the, the, uh, the candle factor has become much more, uh, significant. So, that you can actually operate with fewer lights and gain the same amount of lighting capacity. So, you see that even with the, with the more, on a, on a more limited basis, you see it on the common now. The lights that we put there, the entire common now is lit up because we use LED fixtures as opposed to the, the standard light bulbs. So, I, I think we're, we're in a much better place lighting-wise right now. But there are always areas that something comes up where it's just, where there's a dark spot, that there was a blind spot we can't get to. And sometimes if that's the case, then we should evaluate it, which we do. And then determine, you know, if on a public safety perspective, does it meet the criteria of something that we should really add, uh, and meet those, meet those limits.
So, the, so the only place that I'm thinking about and, you know, it's a stretch that I use almost every day, is Mechanic Street and I'm just thinking about, um, commercial, um, school and YMCA with lots of kids. And I know if you were, uh, just something that we might take a look at, because I think there is sort of a stretch where there's multiple poles with, where it's dark.
Put my eyes on it, uh, as soon as you tell me we're done.
You know, not to be the bearer of bad news, but like, I get the request a lot in my neighborhood where we have no poles. All of the utilities are underground. When neighborhoods are built now, the subdivision, you know, requirements are different that the developer has to do that. So, you know, again, not to be the bearer of bad news, but, you know, to go install, imagine the cost over, you know, one point two miles.
It's prohibitive, actually.
You know, it doesn't make sense and isn't a priority on a neighborhood that doesn't have poles? Probably not, you know, it, you know. There's certain things you can do on your property, you know, as far as, you know, motion detecting lights and things like that. But, um, you know, trying to tackle a neighborhood that has no poles, um, for, for lights is, is a, uh.
Particularly if it's, it's no, low-traffic area.
Yeah, and I mean, there's sidewalks, it's safe.
Yeah.
So, I know that, you know, it's not ideal on Halloween, but unfortunately, um, you know, it's, it's pretty much just cost prohibitive. I think it doesn't make sense even from a maintenance perspective.
People have put in, uh, perimeter lighting and a lot of it can be done solely.
Yeah, yeah.
You can have that, and so it's actually no cost to operate. Um, and folks have done that on their, on their property and it, and it's actually very attractive when, especially for Halloween. For instance, where people, it gets activated, sensor detected, and it'll go on when, uh, when people approach the property.
So, that's just the question, like, just like you had got questions, I get that question a lot, maybe just because of where I live, so. All right, anything else? I know we're getting, getting late, so.
We tried to keep it, I mean.
No, but it was all good stuff, so, all good stuff, all good stuff, so.
Very informative.
All right, great, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great job, thank you.
See you all.
Great presentation.
Can't wait to see that video tomorrow, the DPW. I'll be looking for it.
It'll be a test.
All right, so, um, kinda moving through things, the special town meeting, Warren, I mean, and we've looked at it, we have some time. I don't know.
Just a few brief points, I, I, I'm frustrated by the fact that I actually re- updated the entire thing and then gave Christine the wrong verse. So, um, not her fault, my fault completely, I take the hit on that one. But there was, there's, but it's mostly correct. And there are a few changes I made, but there are a few wording things I wanna, I just wanna adjust. But, but by and large, it's done pretty well. We did, I did include the language, I did get the language from, from, um, Attorney Spillane relative to Article Nine. And I have incorporated that in, into Article Nine. A couple of articles would, which I'll work on the, on the language, it just, they're really mined up in nature, but, but I just, they do, uh, correct the terms, uh, and instead of, put it properly. Uh, but one thing that's, it has substance to it is, is Article, Article Seven. Because I have added a number of capital items to that list, which was originally just one item. But we've had to take a look at that because of the timing of things that have happened. For instance, uh, we just learned that our, that our TASER program in the Police Department has actually gone out of date, which is something, is something that we no longer have, uh, insurance protection on. So, we have to be careful, I mean, it's, it's in place now, but if we don't replace them in the next, in the next year, it's gonna be very expensive. It's gonna, it's gonna be, put us in a tough spot. So, the Chiefs have come across a program that will allow us to, uh, buy it over five years and replace them over five years and keep us in compliance. So, we'd like to start that sooner rather than later, um, and come up with some funding to do that. The other is, um, the garage doors have become almost inoperable at the, at the fire department, we need to fix those immediately. And, um, and the all-field terrain vehicle is something that we, we planned to do originally in the Police Department. And, and, and quite honestly, we, uh, it should have been included in the list originally. The other, uh, item that's really important is the, is dealing with the replacement of the, uh, of the taking down of the laundry building. We had, we s- we had a hundred thousand dollars from the town to pay for that, fifty thousand dollars from the state. And then we bid it and it came out to be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because the costs have become so crazy. So, we need to add additional money to that article to get it done. I don't think we wanna linger on that one any longer, we wanna get it done sooner rather than later. It's a, it's a, it's an issue which we've been trying to address for a long time. And I think we're in a better position to do that this year than we have been in other years. Our free cast position is better than it has been in a long time. So, I think we're in a better, much better position to do that. And I think beyond that, the DPW renovation, I'm, I'm still working a little bit, trying to finalize that language a little bit. And I think nine, nine has the new language in it. So, those are the key things. Our goal is to try and have the, the warrant buttoned up by, uh, December twentieth meeting for the board so that you can act on it. Because, um, your next meeting's on the seventeenth. And we need to have it ready by the sixteenth in order to properly advertise it of January. Okay, so I think our goal is to get it done by then and then, um, we can post it properly, post it earlier as opposed to later. And that way, we, we will be in full compliance.
And I know the citizens petition has asked to come in. I think they want to come in next meeting, so it's pretty early, but, you know, we've, we've heard, we've kinda heard it, so it'll be, it'll, they'll go through that again. So, know that they, they're looking to come in as well.
So, with respect to the, the Capital Improvement Committee, uh, Stephanie, I believe you're still a member of that? Okay, so, I'll be calling for a meeting of that group, uh, to address those items that I just mentioned in, in Article Seven. But I'll be doing that, uh, you know, in December to, to try and get that wrapped up.
All right, I think you can go right into Town Managers' Update.
So, just a, just a few items for you. I, I actually have covered the, uh, I'm, I'm covering the, the HR activity. And right now, uh, the Human Resource Director position is the biggest one that we're working on. Uh, we hope to have that finalized by, uh, by the first of next week. We had some excellent candidates, I, I just know other way to describe it. Uh, some very, very, uh, good candidates who were highly qualified and could do the job and was probably, you know, it's coming down to a very difficult decision because these folks are, are very, very, um, they're good, just good fit for the organization, they just, they, they have great skill sets. And, you know, and I, and Leah's been part of this process and, you know, I'll, I'll defer to her, but I, you know, it's been, these are, these are some really good, really good candidates.
Yeah, really, really impressed with the pool.
Really impressive.
I mean.
Great.
Really, and even Mary Beth Bernard came to help us.
Yeah.
And she, there's a couple of other towns looking that are having trouble even attracting people. And, you know, even she said, who's seeing all these searches, we, we have a very strong pool.
Very strong pool for that one. The, the other, uh, I, positions are Library Page, uh, Substitute Reference Librarian, Substitute Library Assistant and Senior Youth Services Librarian. Those are the ongoing recruitment set I'm going, that I have in right now.
Audit Committee.
I'm sorry, yeah, the Audit Committee is going to meet on December eighth. We're meeting at five o'clock, it's gonna be a Zoom meeting with the auditor to go over the, um, to go the audit process. I know there were a number of questions about the, at the last time, so I, I would think we wanna clarify, uh, how those things were said. If something was misstated, we'll certainly correct that if, if that in fact was the case. And I certainly wanna give the opportunity to, to understand that a little bit more thoroughly myself. And I think for, for the benefit of the Audit Committee, who, um, are a highly talented group of folks that, that are joining in their time for doing this, just to help explain the, you know, the auditing process from a municipal perspective, because it is a little different from, from what is done in, in the, in the private sector. And I think that's, that'll be helpful for everyone at that, at that point. On October seventeenth, this is something that, um, I don't know if I mentioned it the last meeting or not, but the October seventeenth, Foxborough residents and students, uh, at the Foxborough Charter School, are able to access at no cost the Interface Referral Service from William James College. The Interface connects individuals with, from families with mental health providers through custom matches that best suit their needs of the client. The Interface will then conduct several follow-up and contacts with the client to make sure the mental health, uh, provider is a good match for them and that the individual is continuing with mental health services. Interface's services are contracted and paid for through the grant through the Health, Health and Human, Health, uh, for the Human Services Department, that was obtained by Brigham and Women's Hospital in partnership with the Foxborough Human Services Department.
And I think they might be coming in next meeting to hear more about that stuff.
And they'll be talking about that, exactly, so in more detail. But I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that. If anybody is interested in going to the annual MMA Annual Meeting, now's the time to speak now or forever hold your peace. Because we wanna get, get folks signed up for that as well as if you're planning to stay overnight, we wanna make sure we have, uh, a space lined up for you as well. If you are planning to do that, please let us know in our office and, and what, and Christine, actually, Kate's been working on doing, on setting that up for us. Kate, Katie's been doing that. And so she'll continue to, to work on that for you. There was one other thing that Katie mentioned to me too. It was just a reminder that, um, that we've, I've given the approval for the Foxborough High School Carolings, uh, sponsored by the J.C.'s on December twenty-second at five P.M. Uh, on the common, we'll be, we'll be doing next Caroling singing. And that, uh, and then, and also we approve, approve the menorah for, for the lighting on the common as well. And, and finally, um, I, I think it goes without saying that we have a, you know, a really fabulous weekend planned on the common, with the, uh, with the new lighting program. I actually took the time to reach out to Snyder Electric to invite them to, because it'll be their first opportunity to see the lights in, in action, with it, with the new, uh, holiday lighting, uh, setup that we have. With Light Up, Light Uptown is gonna be, you know, like an all-day event, uh, for Foxborough with something that'll be, I think, very, very special. So, I encourage everybody to come. The, the, the key period is between four and six, when most of the activities will be occurring. But there'll be stuff going on all day, including stuff along Central Street. We're gonna be blocking off Central Street to, to make folk, make it much more pedestrian-oriented. And there'll be lots of things for, for young kids. And, and I do hear that there's a special visitor coming at the end of the night to help with the lighting of the, the Christmas tree. Both Mr. and Mrs. will be present this year.
They'll be hanging out with J's before then.
That's right. So, that's, uh, that's, that's the latest I have for you. I don't think any questions if you have any.
All right, moving right along, um, already December sixth, I can't believe it's our next meeting, is the Financial Summit. So, we are gonna meet at six P.M. in this room along with the AgCom and the School Committee. That meeting will be from six to seven-thirty and then just bear with us, we do plan to go right into our Selectmen's meeting. I do wanna try to keep that a lighter meeting, you know, as far as agenda-wise, since we do have an hour and a half summit before then. I did tell Christine that, you know, we can have the, the citizens input come in, but we have plenty of time and, you know, if it works on another meeting, I'd, I'd almost kind of prefer it another meeting. There was something else we have too. The Interface is coming and there's one more thing, right?
Maybe the parking discussion again.
And then maybe the parking discussion again. So, you know, I don't, I don't want that meeting to get too heavy and I don't wanna keep, have that meeting go too long. The other thing, Town Asset Review, so there is an asset, a Building Review Asset Committee. I know Seth had asked about the auditorium, you know, I've asked about the auditorium. There is either the Payne or Pratt School, I don't know why I always interchangeably flip them. Pratt School, um, I did notice like another town on their warrant had, had done some articles, you know, to sell them, you know, if they wanted to. That's kinda like first step, you know, do we wanna do things like that? So, maybe get that, that is, there is a committee that's intact, they are appointed, they probably need to call a meeting and look at things.
And I do have a list prepared of, of, of properties that we're looking at.
Okay.
We have prepared that already.
And that, that would not, that would be for the Asset Review Committee, not the tax item, the, the ones with tax stuff?
Yes, it's, it's tax title property, right.
So, so we'll get that, get that moving along. And I know Paige, you know, may have someone that, you know, every now and then, people bring stuff to her for the auditorium, so see where that comes. every now and then people bring stuff to her for the auditorium, so we'll see where that comes, but, you know, some of that's a little bit cusp-worth due to the, uh, the situation.
There's a, there's a committee that is gonna...
It's already intact, that, so we have a, a building review committee.
And who are they?
Um...
That's the building review committee?
Yeah, I know it, it was Bill Yukna, Gary.
That's Bill Yukna, that's the, uh...
There, there is a committee in place.
That's the town building review, uh, town building committee, actually, it's...
No, building review.
Building review.
Building asset.
Asset re, oh, asset review. Yeah, okay, asset review committee is actually, uh, Lorraine Brew, um, and I, and, uh...
And Gary.
Gary, I believe.
Josh Shippy.
Yeah.
And two other members.
Finance, finance director, uh, a few other folks.
So these are just like some of these other committees that I think we need to make sure that they're meeting regularly, um...
Do they have any, so, is there any position at this point on, so that auditorium behind, like, is that her name? What is that place?
The auditorium.
Yeah, it is the auditorium.
Yeah, the State Hospital Auditorium.
We, we just had a conversation about that this week, about, uh, because we've been, uh, there is a, um, some discussion about a possible proposal to make that work, um, but it's going to be, it's a lot of moving parts to it, so...
Or zoning things, and...
Yeah.
He just showed it to different people that have not come back, um...
Right, so it's, it's a complicated piece, and it requires a lot of moving parts. So we, we're not letting it slip because we've, I want it to be sold since day one, to try and do something with it.
I think that one's under the control of recreation, if you actually look at the deed, too.
It is, it's, well, it's, well, actually, it's, it's, it's a, there's a recreation restriction on it, is what it is. It's strict, only it can be used for recreational purposes.
Okay, okay.
That's what it is.
Unless it's sold.
We tried to change it a number of years ago.
Or zoned.
For a reason.
But with the deed restriction, that's different.
No, the deed restriction says that you could, well, the state, it would be removed by, by having, by final legislation to change it. But, and that's what was tried, we tried to do that about six years ago, if I'm not mistaken, and people were getting nervous about it because there wasn't a specific proposal to, to do that.
So what is the rezoning, wh- why is it not rezoned, why is it not zoned appropriately now for...
Because that was when, when the town took ownership of it, that's the way it had to be zoned by the state. The state had a, had a limitation on it.
How, how does it have to be, it's zoned how? I don't know.
They, it's, right now, it's zoned, I think zoned, um, I believe it's zoned as a business, it could be used for business purposes, but...
Well, it's the overlay district, too, and there was so many residential units were up to that, so what's left kind of in that overlay district would be commercial, but then there's deed restrictions.
But the restriction on it really limited it from how it could be used, that's, that's...
And I think we wanted to move it, but without knowing what we wanted to do, there wasn't necessarily an appetite, so maybe if we have a proposal, and people know what it would be.
The right approach is to, is to work with somebody to identify a, a potential use, maybe even under, put it under a limited, um, or possible seller for whether potential of buying it, but not sign off it until the zoning gets changed, something like that, under those conditions. So it's, like I say, it's not, it's complicated, it's very complicated.
And even the school, we were, when we were talking about that one, too, like, the way that's zoned now, that might require some kind of rezoning to make it financially possible for someone to either A, renovate it, or B, knock it down. You're probably not going to knock it, spend the money to knock it down and do a single-family home, so what does that look like?
At the very least, it's looking at a Z B A approval.
So...
That was, uh, the State Hospital used that exclusively for the history of the State Hospital, then? It was...
That was owned by the State Hospital, that was, that was the, their auditorium for the State Hospital at the time.
Remember there used to be all the tunnels going underground, too, from there?
I heard about that.
You remember the J C's haunted house, it should have been...
Yeah, it used to be a haunted house, it was ago.
And they gifted, gifted it to recreation, right? And if I recall, when the discussion was coming up, there was all kinds of, uh, nothing had, had been decided to use it for, but remember they were going to maybe put, um, uh, not senior housing, but, um, like assisted living?
Yeah.
And so, you know, rumors started going around that was going to be, then people were pushing back in the area, I, I don't know if that was ever really something, but, you know, like you said, if we really had something in mind, that people may...
Then people could decide.
Could come, come forward, but it was a lot of, uh, innuendo on, it might be this, it might do that, and...
This is one that's going to require some, some public discussion and some, and buy-in from folks as to how we use it, but right now, it's not serving anybody's purpose.
But in the meantime, we will, I think that committee probably should meet, that hasn't been a while, look at everything.
I agree with that, yeah.
Then, you know, whatever other proposals are going on, looking at zoning, looking at the long-term B plan with Paige as well.
So Madam Chair, there was one other item which I wanted to, um, mention as part of my report. Now, do you have the, the film footage? There was a, a, actually, a pretty fun thing happened at the Patriots game on Sunday. Uh, it involved both the fire and police department, uh, that happened at halftime. And I received a copy of the film today, which I think is worthy of, of everybody seeing this, so it takes just a few seconds.
See.
It's coming off your mic, your microphone. There you go.
Is that Jim Santucci? He used to do that in high school.
Pretty good.
Whoa.
Yeah, wow.
So they're not seeing it?
Did you have a microphone, Christine?
Why don't we send it out, why don't we send it out from the towns page tomorrow?
It's actually on the, the Foxborough Police's page.
Okay, all right, great, okay.
Apologies for that.
All right.
Who won?
The police did.
The police department won, yeah, police department won. It was a, there were, there were two actually pretty good kicks, uh, but the, don't forget, the wind was a factor in that game, and, and they both kicked into the wind, and unfortunately, they didn't consider the wind in their kicks, and they, and they both missed, but it was, it was a, it was a fun thing to watch.
Well, the professionals missed a few, too, that day, so, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about, uh, them missing theirs.
No, that's right.
All right, so the last thing that I had, um, was just the town manager search update. So the committee met yesterday, and I guess we had twenty-nine applications. I have not asked any more questions, you know, this is our, let, let the screening committee do their job, but, you know, did talk to Bernie and say, we get the number of applications and the pool we want, great. Um, and, you know, they, I think they'll be doing interviews the middle of December is, is what I heard from him. So we are on track, we are on schedule, um, but it's looking like early January will be coming to us.
Twenty-nine seems like a lot.
That is, that is a good number.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how many of those are like viable versus what aren't, you know, but... Because again, I didn't really dig into it for too much info.
But all, all the, all the searches I've heard recently, that's a good number.
Yeah, so if it's anything like our H R director's search, you know, it, it seems like, uh, we're getting a pretty good pool. So that is all I had for updates, anything from you guys before we go to action items?
All right, two quick things that kind of tie together, both involve veterans. Um, just a quick reminder, I, um, I did come up today and leave a check. I promised to make a donation for the, the veterans' markers, um, so, uh, obviously, and it was in the reporter last week, so, uh, anyhow, just a reminder to people, listen, I know times are tough, it's this time, you know, with, with costs and stuff, I need, I'm guessing, I'm not that I, I need to, you know, be here and dragging the funds for them, but I need, I'm sure any little bit would, would help. And, um, and the other thing I just wanted to mention, I just happened to, um, run into Jim DeValis today, and I had also sent a donation for the, you know, for the, their program that they give the turkeys to the veterans. And he actually said that instead of doing the turkeys this year, because they had a little bit of problem last year, and this year, I guess they were having trouble getting the turkeys. And so what they did, I think he told me it was a hundred and forty veterans in town, they actually gave them a hundred dollar gift card instead. So he said, um, you know, uh, so kudos to this town because, uh, donations of fourteen thousand dollars, so that's, um, that's pretty, pretty amazing. Kudos to him and Linda Walsh for or, organizing, and, and kudos to the, um, the people in Foxborough, maybe, didn't have to be people in Foxborough, I'm sure, but anyhow, they, they've got some really, you know, that, that's great, you know, and so anyhow, just wanted to mention that.
All right, so I think we're ready for the action items.
Here we go.
Speaking of veterans, um, motion to approve in honor of donation for veteran, for Veterans Day event catering in the amount of one thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars, ninety-two cents.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Only that my son went to the, um, Veterans Day event, and he said it was fantastic.
It was fabulous, I was there.
It was good, it was good.
Yes.
I wish I could have gone.
It was great.
Very good.
It was really great, so good job to Ally for that.
Right.
All right, so all those in favor?
Hi.
Motion to approve the M I A A High School Football Championship Event with three games on December second and five games on December third at Gillette Stadium to the MPS LLC Annual Entertainment License.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just want to mention that our, our own Foxborough High School football team was one game away from being able to participate in this. I don't know, maybe a little jinx to them, since it's been, been up here, uh, they, they haven't been able to. Would have been nice to see the hometown, uh...
Well, I think our cheerleaders did snag a state title, though, um, this weekend, so we have that, so...
That's great.
Good job to them and congratulations.
Yeah.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, motion to accept a donation of three hundred and two dollars from Seals from the Fall J C's Vindifia.
Uh, there's more? Oh, second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion to accept a donation of two hundred and eighty dollars for historical plaques.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't realize there was something, sorry.
Sorry. Motion to approve the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion or add to some of those? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, and final motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, just a reminder, we'll see everyone at the, at a different time, six o'clock for the summit, seven thirty for our meeting in two weeks.
And Light Up Uptown.
Light Up Uptown.
Oh, yeah, you mentioned that, too, so that's right.
And happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, all those in favor, adjourning?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everyone.
All right, thanks, good night.